Ladies and gentlemen, it is seven o'clock. We'll call our meeting to order. If you would, bow your heads, please, for our invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day and all the blessings you've brought to us. As we go through this meeting tonight, make this meeting a blessing to you and to your citizens of Graham. Always protect those that protect us, whether it be in Graham, North Carolina, the United States, or across the nation. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen. Would you please rise for our pledge of allegiance? Ladies and gentlemen, we are the Graham City Council. We appreciate everybody being here. And rest assured, everyone that's here will have opportunity to speak tonight. We've got a few things to take care of before we get to you speaking. So first, we're going to do our consent agenda. A is approval minutes April 2nd. B is approval of tax releases and refunds. C is approve amending the traffic schedule to reflect the addition of stop signs. D approve public and private parking lease agreement from Graham Presbyterian Church. And E is approve a request from Brian Haygood to close north and south side of West Elm Street. Does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remove item C, please.
C will be pulled.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number D, please.
D is pulled. Anything else? With that, I need a motion to approve A, B, and E of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Lee, we'll start with you, please.
So Frankie, or I think Lieutenant Flood's here this evening. I don't know if he can answer this question or not, but I remember in the past that we made a change, I believe it was to the four-way at Ward and Holm Street. Five to six years ago? Lieutenant, do you recall? That being the case? Okay.
We've made a couple of changes in that general area.
On Ward Street in general. I also noticed that Ward and Holt has a four-way stop. And about 300 feet from that intersection coming away from Maple Street is where we're proposing to put another three-way stop?
Kevin Flood, come up to the microphone, please, sir. I'll tell you, excuse me. I've moved you up, didn't I?
All right. So with that, we are proposing to make it a stop to slow people down. We're getting a lot of cut-through traffic through there. And what we're seeing, especially when you get right there at Holt and Gilbert, because they're picking up that momentum, they're blowing through that stop sign. We've got one resident there just got two vehicles in the last several months that have been struck sitting out in front of his house, which comes from a failure to stop at that point there. So that would just, we're hoping just would add another stop sign there. We'll slow down that traffic so that they're abating all the stop signs through there and hopefully prevent other problems in that area.
25 mile an hour speed limit in that area?
I think it's still, I don't think it's posted, so it'd be 35. I don't think we posted it to 25 yet.
Yeah. And so five or six years ago, when we put that four-way at Ward and Holm, that helped that curve right there, but it didn't help that speed once it straightens out.
That's correct.
Okay.
And like I say, we're seeing a lot more traffic. They've learned that's a cut-through, especially when it, in the mornings and then early afternoons, coming back and forth to District Court. They've realized they can just cut straight across and avoid some of the traffic.
You understand, I'm a little concerned anytime that 300 feet away, we put another three-way or four-way stop sign, that close to Maple, because that's like one block, actually two blocks from Maple.
And absolutely. And I can understand that. And like I say, a lot is prompted from, and we got a resident there that's had two vehicles within the last couple of months struck.
Safety's the main concern. It sure is. Okay, thank you. That's all.
You stay for a minute. Melody, any questions?
No, sir.
Griffin?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dwayne. Appreciate you being here, sir. With that, I need a motion to approve or deny C.
Approve. Motion.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we go to D, is approve public-private parking lease agreement for Graham Presbyterian Church. Melody, you have a question?
I don't. Just a comment for clarification. The sign that we saw as an example, if you read the lease agreement, it talks about the parking being available Monday through Saturday. And the sign is the example, actually, it's not an example, it's already existing in that parking area, says Monday through Friday. So I've spoken with staff about that, and that is a clarification that they will change.
We need to add that to the wording?
We'll change the wording on the sign to be consistent with the agreement.
Is there also something on the sign saying that the church can close it for funeral?
And that's in the agreement. They can close it at any time.
They can close it on plan.
No.
No.
Does it need to be? That, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on you.
That's not, that's, I mean, that's not really, it says in the lease agreement that it's open Monday through Saturday, it's available. That's what's written, and then they, unless they have an event, which in that case, they would contact the city.
They actually put a physical barrier up.
They've changed it.
They do.
But you're all right, we're leaving it off the sign.
Just that our sign was.
We'll just change the sign to reflect approved Saturday.
Griffin, questions?
Yes, sir.
I do have a quick question. So Frankie, also in the agreement, I noticed that it's, it says that we maintain the parking lot as far as repaving, restriping, and snow removal. As far as repairs, has there been any repairs that we've made to the parking lot recently?
The major repairs that I'm aware of, we haven't made any repairs.
Minor? Okay. And who makes that decision as to when repairs are needed? Just publicly? So if you go by there and see the need, you'll voluntarily go in and take care of it? Great. It's a good, it's a good agreement that we have there.
Melody, anything else, Dave?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, I need a motion to approve or deny?
So moved.
To approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Great deal. Okay, next we go to old business. The East Interstate Service Road property except offer to purchase of $264,703 submitted by Martin Properties. I think Frankie, you're handling this, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The city has conducted a, an upset bid process. That process has concluded for the surplus property on East Interstate Service Road. The prevailing bid was $264,703, which is just shy of the appraised amount, but very, very close. The staff would recommend accepting the offer and effectuate, and authorizing the staff to effectuate the sale to Martin Properties.
Questions for the staffs? Griffin, please.
No, sir.
Chip?
Sir.
Lee?
Just for the record, the assessed value of the property?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, and this offer is for $264.
Okay.
Melody?
No, sir. Thank you.
With this, I will explain to everyone, this purchase, this property was purchased for a failed project, and only person on this board is me, so I'm taking the responsibility for this. I voted to do this, and now it's time to get it back on the tax books. So that's what we're trying to do. It will not only benefit us, but it'll also benefit the county because it goes back on their tax books. Is anybody from the floor who wants to speak on this? If not, I will move the council to page 15 on your agenda and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the offer of $264,703 submitted by Martin Properties ACNC LLC for surplus city property on East Interstate Service Road, more particularly described as GPIN, number 888-4402904, parcel ID 146703, and authorize the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk to effectuate the sale.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Good deal. Next is B, is quad judicial public hearing. I think Frankie, we're gonna, Nathan, you're handling this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe procedural, so the applicant has been in contact with staff, but there wasn't enough time for staff to evaluate the operation and maintenance agreement that had been put forth by the developer of this lot. And so in consultation with the developer, the staff would like to recommend tabling this until the next meeting. I think procedurally, because it is a quad judicial hearing, we have to open the hearing and then table it till next month, but I'd refer to Mr. Coleman.
Open it and then table it till next month.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Questions for the staff? Chip, start with you, please.
No questions.
Lee, questions for the staff?
No questions.
Melanie?
No, sir.
Griffin?
Just clarification, how many months has this been? Three?
Yeah, we're pushing three months.
No more questions.
Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing. I asked anybody who wants to speak on this. If you do, you would need to be sworn in or affirm. Does anybody want to speak on this tonight? If not, I'll close this portion of the public hearing, and I'll ask for a consensus or a motion from the council to continue till next month. What's the date for next month? Include June the 6th in your motion, please.
Mayor, I make a motion that we continue this hearing until June?
June 4th.
Yeah.
What a bit tricky, you and I. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Now, I make a motion that we continue the hearing until June the 4th meeting.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Next we go, requesting petitions from the citizens, request from Jason Cox for consideration of a city-sponsored life safety improvements program. And I don't see Jason Cox here. Oh, is he? Come up, Jason, if you would, please. How are you tonight? Just have your name and address, please, sir.
Jason Cox, 200 North Main Street, Graham.
You the one?
What's that?
What do you want? What do you?
Well, I was thinking that a large amount of what was already sent to the city council was fairly self-explanatory, so my expectation was that there would be questions. In short, we have a property at 106 to 112, originally 106 to 110, but it was readdressed due to the addition of additional units. 106 to 112 North Main Street, which is ongoing mixed-use redevelopment project that you see up on the screen. Specifically, I'm here on two topics. One, in a more general long-term sense, is the need for there to be some sort of city program to address the realities of life safety requirements for assembly and related types of uses within the downtown. Specifically, we're talking about fire sprinklers. It is my understanding, unless someone brings up an example I'm unaware of, we do not have a single structure within downtown that actually has a fire protection system at the moment?
We're not aware.
Okay. So city manager doesn't know about one. I think we're pretty confident on that. So what we have in the long term is that there is a need for a city program to address this reality. It was something that I had brought to the city manager's office July of last year, making clear that my expectation is that that would continue to be an issue with certain types of uses. In the, almost a year, nine months since, we have been successful in recruiting some tenants and unsuccessful in recruiting others, and it largely comes down to the question of sprinkler systems. While Graham is often referred to as an up-and-coming downtown, the emphasis on the belief in the future results, not the actual current results, market rates, which are the prices in which tenants can pay rent, is the reality that we face in the current up-and-coming aspect. The reality is this. So that's the long term, and you have in front of you an example of a letter from 7/16/18 that outlines some suggestions, and you also have a more recent letter. My recent letter gets more specific, and it's specifically regarding a project that has tentatively been entitled Patterson Hall, which would be an event space comprising approximately space for 200 people at any given time, which despite efforts to try to work through compliance code as a historic structure, we've been unable to find a way to make that work without sprinkler system. And so the sprinkler system, additional costs are going to make that project probably not viable. Plain and simple.
Okay. Would you mind answering questions from the council?
Absolutely.
I'll start with Lee, please.
So Jason, talk to us a little bit about the cost, because when you look at an outfit or a renovation and the cost of doing that renovation, sometimes putting in a sprinkler system when it's required can be very challenging to work that cost in. So what you have in front of us tonight is a request that the city look at some incentive program that would be fair across the board to every business or every owner of a building in the downtown or adjacent areas?
Correct.
For an outfit, for the city to have, maybe look at the water tap, sewer taps, to that, to accommodate a outfit to a sprinkler system.
Correct.
Talk about the percentage of what a sprinkler system can cost for renovation.
So obviously, it depends on square footage and a myriad of other things. In general, as an example, $50,000 to $100,000 is a pretty good starting point for a project anywhere from about the $3,000 square foot to the $6,000 square foot.
So $100,000, I mean, within reason, could be 20% or 15% of a renovation project easily?
Unquestionably, or more.
Just for the sprinkler system?
Correct.
And so what you're asking the city to do is just look at one particular item, and that is a sprinkler system, and actually look at supplying the water taps and sewer taps to provide that ability for the building to have a sprinkler system. Is that, is that safe?
That is correct. Essentially, what we're talking about is the utility work to basically bring the utility to the building.
Got you.
So in a context, obviously, it's a different type of utility, but when we go about one of these projects, or we've done with the Scott Building, or so on and so forth, Duke Energy has additional services required. Piedmont Energy for gas has additional services required, additional meters. So a lot of times, what will happen is they recognize the long-term value of that, and so they bring the utility to the building. The cost for me to take that utility throughout the building, obviously, are borne by myself.
Great. I'm glad you brought that up. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Understood.
Melody, please.
Jason, where is the yoga studio in relation to where you're talking about the events?
If you walk up the stairs, yoga studio's to the left, event spaces to the right. So if you, well.
Okay, great.
So we use the less pretty just because it's closest to me when it was still with the white paint.
Okay.
If you look at the center window that's smaller than the rest, that is the walk-up. Basically, everything to the left of that window is the yoga studio, everything to the right is the event space.
Excellent. So it's next door.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you.
And one thing, just to add as an additional, one thing we attempted to do in regards to life safety was we added an additional steel staircase with an area of refuge off the back. We took one of the original openings for a window, added the required commercial egress area of refuge, et cetera, in order to address life safety and just make sure that there was that additional exit, unfortunately, just due to the type of occupancy code requires a sprinkler system.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, I'll just make a statement that I can personally attest to what you're experiencing, because I've experienced it with our properties as well. But I guess one thing I worry about from the seat is the transparency and the mechanism with which this grant money could, could be allotted with pretty much two, two active developers and hopefully more coming, looking at playing favorites or all this money going in one direction, that's a concern to me. Do you have any idea or suggestion as to the mechanics of how that would, this revolving, if it becomes a revolving grant, how that would be allotted, and if there's eligibility requirements where you can't get it back-to-back years?
So to be very clear, I think we're talking about two different discussions. We're talking about a specific project which sits here, and we're talking about a long-term program which sits here. So I just want to be very clear that we have two different discussions that we're kind of having simultaneously. In terms of a program, it would seem to me that it would function like many city programs. It's assigned a budget item or budget amount annually, and when it's out, it's out. In terms of favoritism, obviously, any type of project such as this goes through several layers of approval. The TRC from the city, code officials, fire officials, et cetera, et cetera. I would trust that the staff handles the transparency aspect in terms of the actual projects. Specific to favoritism, I don't have an answer for that, because it would have to be because someone was actively doing a project and it was actively spending that money to do so. So I think that that becomes a moot point. It's a question of whether a project's happening or not. Or more importantly, in this context, whether a project does happen or not.
Yeah. That's a concern, that framing it as project-based, not person-based at a cumulative stage, but...
Last time I was told, my company is an entity unto itself, and it is not me alone.
Good. Okay. Chip?
I'd like to, a question Lee had. In other words, this, this program you're looking at for your buildings, future buildings or whatever, you're just looking to get the tap and the service lines to the building. From there, you'll take over that. Is that correct?
That is correct. And just for some clarity, in case it assists the council, my reasoning behind that was largely, I sit in two different fields in that. I strongly believe that things do need to be even-handed. I don't ask or expect that the city's supposed to do something to the building itself. My request is to get the utility to the building so that such a use can occur. So this is sort of one of those classic but-for scenarios. But for a water line of the necessary size coming to the building, these other things occur.
This is just a wild guess.
Yes, sir.
To do the tap, to lay the service line to the building, what do you project that would cost?
So obviously, a few things that I'm going to say as caveats.
I understand.
Okay. So first caveat is, depending on what the city can or can't do, their numbers may be very different from mine. The city also is a much larger customer than I would be for a utility contractor, therefore they may see a little bit better rates. For me, as an individual, you're probably looking around the $25,000 mark.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Come up, Mayor, if you would, please. Let's have your name and address, please.
Mary Fawcett, Downtown Development Coordinator, 697 Towne Street. Mayor, council, as you've heard me in preceding months come before you, I've been researching the Downtown Associate Community Program. And through this research, I attended the North Carolina Main Street Conference, I have visited Morganton, made some phone calls to various other communities, Figueroa, Virginia, Hickory, et cetera. And there are already establishments in the programs out there that we can just copy to put in place that not only will benefit this historic building, but other properties in downtown Graham too. So I see it as a great benefit for your consideration of approval.
Mind answering questions from us?
I'll be happy to.
Melody, please.
I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
Griffin?
Is there a favorite one you've seen?
I do favor Salisbury's.
Briefly explain, if you would.
So the grant amount is up to 25% or 50% of the eligible project cost, whichever is cheaper. And then those that have existing access to a fire line, the grant may be used for installation of a building sprinkler system at a rate of $2 per square foot, building area protected, not at seeing the maximum grant of $25,000.
No more questions?
No questions at this time.
The Salisbury proposal, is it the municipality putting in that line themselves?
I don't know the particulars, but that is my assumption at this time.
Yeah. City Graham only does residential taps?
Right.
So...
And I'll just piggyback on that. What I heard from the city of Salisbury, and to the point about favoritism, is they wanted to be seen as having skin in the game.
Sure.
They wanted to see as many developers come to them as possible that had historic preservation in mind, and they wanted to see that the envelope was being pushed further for what was being attractive for the economic development.
Sure. So in Salisbury, are they using a target or baseline for the size of the sprinkler system, depending on the size of the renovation project, depending on the size of the building? What I'm getting at is, do they say that there's a minimum that you have to sprinkle the entire building, and the service has to be so big for you to qualify for this grant, instead of some smaller fire suppression system?
I did read that there was a encouragement of a six-inch or larger fire lines throughout the back alleys.
Perfect.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Come up, Mr. Tom. How are you tonight?
I'm fine, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Frankie, understood you to say there was no one else downtown that had a sprinkler system?
That I'm aware of.
All right. And is there anybody else in the city that has a sprinkler system?
Yes.
How many would you say?
Quite a few.
All right. And did any of those get any sort of subsidy from the city to put those in?
Yes.
In what fashion?
We've given direct cash incentives to some industry.
Now, you're talking about industrial, like Lidl perhaps, or some of those that are, I mean, you gave them a subsidy not specific to this?
Correct.
But an industrial incentive?
Right.
All Martin, Lidl, and I'm not sure who else. Okay. Is there a requirement different for downtown from other areas of the city with respect to the sprinkler?
There are different fire, there are differing building standards. Our downtown generally is the number-one fire district. It's the most susceptible for fire spreading to adjacent properties. Much of the conversation has been about incentives tonight, but there's a, there's another public purpose that presents itself in discussing this, and that's fire prevention, fire safety. We hand out smoke detectors and batteries for smoke detectors and things like that in the interest of fire prevention. In my mind, from looking at it from the public standpoint, our interests are as much in fire safety and fire prevention as they are in economic development.
All right. But aside from the economic development incentives, there have been no specific sprinkler, I'll call it a subsidy?
The only thing that has changed in my tenure, when we developed our new connection fees, system development fees, we exempted sprinkler systems for fire protection. So they do not have to pay a connection fee any longer.
Who, what category?
Fire suppression taps or connections are not required to pay that capacity fee any longer. It was required years ago.
But somehow that still is required in the town?
It is not required. The fee is, anybody is exempt from the fee now. Anyone.
Okay. I'm not catching the distinction between downtown versus everybody else with respect to the fees that are being sought or to be waived, to be sought, versus the status?
The fees, the capacity fees, the system development fees, up until one year ago, if you made a six-inch tap, or a two-inch tap, or whatever size tap, you had to pay connection fees, impact fees, we'll call them, regardless of the intent of the use of that tap. A fire service line is usually a larger tap, four-inch, six-inch tap, that sits dormant for, could be years upon years, other than random testing. So the logic behind a system development fee is you charge for the impact to the capacity of your system. Those uses do not impact the capacity of your system, at least on a recurring basis. So therefore, they are exempt from the old impact fee or connection fee as of 2018.
And what part of downtown doesn't qualify for that?
Everyone in the city qualifies for that. Everyone, everywhere. Regardless of, if you connect to our water system, whether you're in town, out of town, two-inch, four-inch, six-inch, anyone that's connecting for a fire suppression system is exempt from a connection fee.
All right. Then I'm not catching, what is the distinction?
The construction of the actual line, putting in the meter. It's construction of running that meter from the main line to get it to the building that I think you're missing, Tom. Is that, is that actual cost?
That's, that's different.
That's an additional cost.
Yeah, because the fee he's talking about used to only be, depending on the size of the water line, somewhere in the thousands of dollars.
Yes.
And, but it's the cost of actually buying that huge, all the, all the system to put in place under the sidewalk and to tap into that main line.
Asphalt, traffic control, excavation.
It's, it's that cost there that is being considered.
So your question is, have we done, have we, have we developed anything in the past? Yes, we've exempted all development from those fees in the past. Happened to be last year.
All right. The proposal as it is submitted, does it also extend the, the expansion of the fee subsidy besides in downtown, other than in downtown?
Well, I would have to look at Jason's proposal.
No, no.
It did not. But is it fair to do it throughout the city? Yes.
Well, that's my question, Mr. Mayor. Generally speaking, my, my concern is, even though we have a business downtown, and I guess could benefit from if y'all adopt such a thing, perhaps sometime in the future, my, my concern is that everybody be treated the same, both with respect to downtown and all development downtown, but also with respect to other areas of the city. And I'm just concerned that.
Unfortunately, we don't treat, downtown is treated differently.
Yeah.
Because. Because of the density of development, the proximity to neighbors. Mr. Kimbry could probably speak about the extra requirements as much as anyone because of the relative closeness, we'll, we'll say, of the dwellings or buildings. It requires extra work. Fire suppression systems, sprinkler systems are an option in lieu of some other types of work, extra masonry walls or extra layers of drywall, things like that. But fire suppression systems are very effective.
All right. But for instance, in, I'll call it a strip center, and I don't know if the one across the street counts because it's in downtown or whether that counts as downtown, but basically various strip centers, retail centers throughout the city would have that same issue underlying.
Depends on the occupancy.
Yeah. All right. At any rate, Mr. Mayor, my concern is that the fairness.
I agree. Just information wise, Joe Wheeler's office was sprinkled. I'm not sure if it's still in effect.
North Main?
Yes.
On North Main?
Dr. Johnson's office.
Okay.
It has sprinkler system. Whether or not it's still in force, I don't know.
Yeah.
But this meeting area he's trying to do forces him to either do a sprinkler system or make it smaller.
All right. There was a meeting area done, y'all approved, at least the zoning for it, some years ago out on Allen Street. And Allen Street and Albright.
Yes.
Do you happen to know if that's sprinkled?
I believe it is.
Yeah.
He had to sprinkle it because it ran into the ABC Board's regulations for size. He didn't want to sprinkle the thing just to have his, a meeting with his people, but to go to alcohol, which he wanted to do.
Okay. Would that be the closest parallel, except for the downtown historic nature of this project?
Aside from not being downtown, that would be close.
That would be my.
Thanks, sir.
My turn.
Anybody else want to speak on this? With that, then I charge the staff to investigate this proposal and bring a report of cost and other programs around the state back to us for consideration next month. I need a consensus for that.
And Mayor, may I say something in regards to this proposal? Is this something very similar that I voiced some support for quite a while back when this came up as an incentive program for us to review? Also, to the point I want to make is anytime that you sprinkle a building, we kind of dance around this, the uses of that building increases dramatically. Not only that, but the value of the building for the city and the county increases. So it really is truly a very, I think, beneficial incentive program for us to look at.
And I'll add that, that upstairs residential, which we want and hope to have for vibrant downtown, it's almost cost prohibitive at this point. And, and we've all looked at that and seen different cases of that.
Consensus?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So we have a consensus for that. Did you get that, Melody? Melody? Did you get that? Darcy? Okay. All right. Next, we go to number four, recommendation from planning board, public hearing, Lacy Acres, RZ 1901, request from Penny, whatever that word is. Nathan, you handling this for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to rezone the subject property from R18 to R9. The property is currently vacant, wooded, and under cultivation. There's one nuance here. The item before the council tonight is the rezoning. It is separate and distinct from the subdivision approval. The, although they appear similar, the one before us to discuss is the rezoning. Based on approval or denial for the rezoning, it would require approval or denial for the subdivision subsequently.
Yeah. Questions for the staff? Melody, please.
Not at this time.
Griffin?
Yeah. Nathan, looking, I guess that's more of a site plan. Give me one second. So the, for clarity on the two issues, the two distinct issues, which would go, which is subject to TRC approval?
The subdivision.
Okay. No more questions right now.
No questions at this time. Any questions for the staff?
I do, Mayor. So Nathan, I have a final plat that was recorded in 2004 for Valley Field subdivision. Question for you is, there's a 50-foot right-of-way at the back of Cartwell Lane that has been designated to give access to this property. Has anything changed since that recorded deed in 2004?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I've got a recorded deed from 1981 for Woodshire Estates, and it's showing a 60-foot right-of-way dedicated to give access to this property. Has there been any change to that recorded plat that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Just for the record, do you know how many dedicated right-of-ways there currently exist in Valley Field to give access to adjacent property?
I believe there are five.
There's five. And this would use one of them to give access to that property. So there's two right-of-ways for future use of the property to the east. There's one right-of-way for property to the north, and then there's one right-of-way 50-foot that's giving access to this property, which is in the southwest. Is that correct? And then one more actually in there as well.
I believe that Covington Loop touches it twice, but I'm sure that it does once, the property to the east.
Valley Field subdivision is zoned R12, but that's an R12 subdivision with open space. Is that correct?
Yes.
Could you explain that, what that means?
An open space subdivision has a separate lot size requirement and reduces the lot widths from what is approved under a standard R12 subdivision. The minimum lot size in Valley Field is 10,000 square feet, not 12,000, which is what the R12 comes from, 12,000 square feet. R9, 9,000 square feet. The open space permits lots down to 10,000 square feet. Lots are only required to be 60 feet wide, which is the same for the R9. But open space must then be preserved. For Valley Field, much of that is in the floodplain, but there is also open space to the west, which borders the property under discussion tonight.
So Valley Field subdivision, even though it's zoned R12, the lots don't meet the R12 requirement because they were granted a, whatever use that you would want to call that, a, to be forgiven for not meeting those requirements of 12,000 square feet because of the open space that the subdivision has, correct?
That's accurate. The majority of the lots in Valley Field do not meet the R12 standard.
And how much open space is required to meet that qualification?
The open space minimum square feet is 10,000 square feet, and each additional lot reduction has to be made up for in additional open space requirement. So if you had four lots that were 10,000 square feet, they would each be 2,000 square feet short. Therefore, 8,000 square feet would have to be added to the 10,000 square feet for 18,000 square feet of open space.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we usually go to the, who is proposing this now, and that's what we'll do. We'll call for them to come up, please. And when you come up, give us your name and address. Good to see you, sir.
See you, Mr. Mayor. So my name is Garrick Sevila, spelled S-E-V-I-L-L-A. First name spelled G-A-R-R-I-C-K. And my address is 3700 Lichen Parkway, and that's in Durham, North Carolina, 27707.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Carla Sevila. I'm one of the builders with Glenwood Homes, and my address is 1015 Pinehurst Drive in Chapel Hill.
Baby's going to speak, I know. So what's her name?
This is baby Carl, and he still needs his mom at this point, so this will be his first council meeting.
Hello, my name is Penny Secadlo. I am the applicant. I am also the principal engineer of Penny Engineering Design, 9220 Fairbanks Drive in Raleigh.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So I'm legal counsel for Glenwood Homes, and as stated with me are Penny Secadlo and Carla Sevila, who's an owner of Glenwood Homes. In case anybody was wondering, Carl and I are married, and Carl is our, is our son, our fourth child. We have another one of our sons here tonight, so he can, he can see how local government works. I just want to make four points and then turn over, depending on Carl, to answer any questions that the, the council might have. As, as was mentioned, there are two distinct decisions here before the city council today. One is the rezoning application request for R9, and the other one is the subdivision request. Now, first point is, with regard to the zoning, North Carolina law requires that zoning decisions be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. In this case, the planning board, which, which voted to deny the rezone, was supposed to offer, you know, advice and comment on whether the rezoning was consistent with the Graham 2035 comprehensive plan. It didn't know that, or did not do that. It left blank the explanatory portions of the form. I don't know why, but in thinking about it, it's hard for me to see how the R9 zoning is anything but consistent with the plan. It fulfills the plan's density goal of three to six units per acre for this particular area, and it fosters smart growth through higher density and efficient use of the city's resources. The homes that are built here will make use of the existing city water infrastructure. The second point I want to emphasize is that Glenwood Homes took very seriously the feedback from the adjoining owners and the planning board. That's why Glenwood presented the subdivision plan to the adjoining owners on April 11th. Now, unfortunately, the address for the Valley Field HOA was not correct in the property tax records, and as a result, those residents did not get the notice of our first meeting, but many did get notice at the planning board meeting, and they, they did attend. And at that meeting, we heard the desires for an R12 zoning instead of R9 for buffer space to the Woodshire subdivision and for, for more open space. So Glenwood went back to the drawing board and prepared an alternative plan that still makes business sense for the company. No one told Glenwood to do this. We did so voluntarily as a show of good faith and to reach compromise with, with the neighbors who have very strong feelings about this, as you will hear tonight. Our alternative plan, which is not in your packet of, of materials, but I, I wanted to show you. It's an R12 plan with open space, same as the Valley Field subdivision, as, as was discussed. And the key points about it is it drops 17 units. It adds a 20-foot buffer area to the Woodshire subdivision. So the Woodshire subdivision is up here. We've added a 20-foot buffer space, common space, that when combined with 30-foot building setback would provide a 50-foot buffer to the Woodshire subdivision in practical terms. And the other thing that we did is reduce the amount of roadway. We shrunk the amount of roadway, increased the open space, and increased the size of stormwater control measures. Now, we presented this plan, which has 148 units instead of the 165 units in our original subdivision application. We presented it to the owners at an April 25 meeting, but it made no difference. You know, after two hours of listening to their concerns, the feeling we got is that whatever is built, be it, you know, under an R18, R12, or R9 zoning, it's simply the, we are not able to use the public right-of-ways on Chartwell and Stonehaven. They, they want no use of those, those roadways, which effectively means that these parcels would be landlocked and could not support subdivision development. In our view, that's, that's not a reasonable position. There are no alternative entrances for subdivision to be built here. We've, we've tried to explain this multiple times. Now, last week, Monday, we submitted the, this R12 with open space plan. I understand it's the city's position that R9 zoning, which we're seeking here, would not support the alternative plan, but if the city council were to rezone to R12 or decide that R12 is the more appropriate zoning, we could come back and resubmit this plan and seek subdivision by right. But, and this brings me to the third point I want to make. If, if this plan, if this alternative R12 plan makes no difference to the neighbors, you know, Glenwood would, would prefer R9 zoning and approval of the 165-unit plan, particularly when a plan that's more dense would make more efficient use of the city's resources. Now, I, I just want to make one final point, with a couple observations about the connections to Chartwell and Stonehaven, which I understand to be the main objections of, of many of the people that are here tonight. Now, as, as Councilman Kim Ray was alluding to, the, the public records for these subdivisions clearly envision that these roadways would interconnect and serve a subdivision that would be constructed on these parcels. And the second thing I, I just wanted to mention is I've heard many neighbors say that the conditions on Chartwell and on Stonehaven and, and the roads to the Woodshire subdivision can't support either the type or the volume of traffic that is expected to come from this subdivision or from the construction of the subdivision. Now, now Penny will tell you that, you know, these roads, from an engineering perspective, were designed and built to handle this, this type of traffic and can do so, do so easily. And in, in response to all the feedback I've been hearing, I have personally, you know, driven these streets on several different days and at different times, and what I see are, are wide streets that can support the additional traffic. And, you know, and finally, you know, Glenwood Homes understands that growth, change, anytime you're extending a street, it's, it's a sensitive issue. And Glenwood takes the, those concerns seriously, which is why it took upon itself to revise the plan and submit it to the planning staff for consideration. But, you know, rezoning and subdivision decisions are also governed by law, and it's, you know, we believe that our applications satisfy those laws. And so we would request that the applications as submitted be approved, or in the alternative, if, if the city council thinks that R12 subdivision approval is, is appropriate, we would, we would, we would ask for that with the opportunity to come back later with this, this revised plan.
Would you mind answering some questions from the council?
To the extent I can, yes, Mayor.
I'll start with Griffin, please.
I think you've answered mine.
Shepherd?
May I statement where you reduced the width of the roadways? Did I hear that correctly?
Reduce the width of the roadways?
Yes.
I, I don't think I said that, but what did, what did you hear?
You, you said something like changing the streets.
Oh, yes. Yes, sir. So the, the length, so the total roadway, if you were to measure it in linear feet, has been reduced. Penny can talk to more about that. So on this alternative plan, there's less hards, less hardscape.
But what, what did you reduce it from?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
The running area.
Oh, the, the length?
The length, yes.
The length, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. May I ask you?
Penny, can you give me the exact figures?
It, it, it went from approximately 7,000 linear feet down to 6,000 linear feet.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry. May I ask you another question? The, the roads, I'm, I'm not sure about inside Valley Field, but Woodshire, those streets are probably eight inches of stone, two inches of I-2?
Probably. They are NCDOT roads.
Yeah, that will support one heavy truck a day.
Yes.
Would y'all be willing to, to bond these streets in case this heavy truck traffic coming in hauling stone asphalt, in case they're torn up by this heavy truck traffic?
I would say that in my experience as an engineer, that all contractors repair any damage that they do. Now, now, the logistics of that, I can, I can have somebody like Garrett work that out.
Okay. I don't know what the payment schedule is in Valley Field. It's a city street. What, what would that be, Frankie? Six, a stone, two of I-2?
I am sure that the roads in, in Valley Field are designed to carry a fire truck, and if they're designed to carry a fire truck.
One heavy truck a day.
That, then they're, then they're capable of carrying the construction traffic. I have, I have seen a lot of construction traffic on residential roads. It, it has been what I have done for years, and I do know that if there is damage, either the city or the state goes back to the contractor and asks them to repair it. I've never seen a time when they didn't.
Thank you.
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you.
The revised plan that you're offering tonight to go to an R12 open space in the future, if approved, how much open space is on that plan?
There is 15 of the 57 acres.
So there's 15 acres of open space on that plan?
Correct. Which is, if I can read my numbers, somewhere in the 26% open space.
That was going to be my next question. Thank you.
See, that's why I wrote it down.
There you go. Thank you. Talk to me about the buffer areas, because you mentioned the buffer area along Woodshower, but it looks like you've got a buffer area on the, the new R12 open space plan that actually buffers the back of Valley Field there at the cul-de-sac.
That is correct. That is a 30-foot buffer. There exists a 30-foot private access easement there, and so just to keep that road accessible, we, we went ahead and put that into a buffer. The access will go away once we develop the property, and then it could be replanted.
So that buffer connects to the open space there in Valley Field as well?
That buffer does, may barely, just barely connect into the open space, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, put it down. Where are you at?
The actual entrance off of Valley Field, there's a small buffer that I can see on that plat. If I'm not mistaken, there's a buffer right there at the back of the cul-de-sac at Cartwell.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, right there. So they've extended it around to Valley Field as well? So isn't Valley Field, don't they have most of that buffered, almost to that buffered? When I say buffer, most of that is the open space at Valley Field. Is that? Almost to that buffer, is, and when I say buffer, most of that is the open space at Valley Field. Is that? And they're buffered? Okay. That answers my question. So in the new proposed R-12 open space subdivision, are there any houses located in the flood area?
No.
Negative. The, the, the 100-year flood is completely within the, um, uh, open space.
Fantastic. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions, please?
Not for them, for Nathan. Let me get the understanding here that they started out with an R-9. We've now got an R-12 in front of us. Now, is that something that we're prepared to look at? Or are we, because they originally submitted the R-9, and that's what came before us?
The application that's before us is for an R-9 rezoning. The discussion about the subdivision and open space and road lengths are all subdivision questions. They're not rezoning questions.
Correct.
And the application that's before us is an R-9.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move that right there. Come up, Tom, if you would, please. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. If, if the council's vision of this plan is at, is just as adequate, could it be put over there so the room?
That's fine.
Sure.
It should be on the screen.
But I think that the, the alternative one is not in the packet of materials.
Okay, let's leave it over here. So somebody might be able to use that.
I, I think that would help the discussion. Uh, the other question, uh, Mr. Mayor, is to follow up on the council, uh, member Wiggins' question. It's still not quite clear to me, even from the answer she got, whether, in other words, whether you're, whether the council is being requested to, uh, whether the request is being changed to be a request for an R-12 with the open space.
I think what it is, is he's given us an option to go to R-12 because Valley Field is R-12, but it's R-12 with, uh, a little twist. Uh, but he's given us an option here. And the staff would rather have R-9 because it's more financially feasible for the city to, to take care of it at R-9. But we have that option to go to R-12. They're willing to do that.
All right. I guess my question, Mr. Mayor, is from previous, many different times of, of hearing different kinds of requests. My understanding was that it was the applicant who had to make the request for a change if they'd had something approved at planning or, or denied at planning board, that the onus is on them to make that request.
It is.
Well, and it's unclear to me whether they have made that request.
We will find out after we talk to everybody and we'll ask. Before we vote on this, they will say yes or no to R-12.
It would seem, I mean, I guess it would seem to me you'd want to know that at the outset, but, uh.
I, I think, i- if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, Tom, it, it was pretty obvious to me that the applicant made the change to be considered for R-12 tonight. The applicant did suggest that they would be willing to consider an R-12 from an R-9. So procedurally, it's in front of us for our decision. If they are the ones that actually come up and propose it. If they did not, I agree with you. We're only considering our R-9. But if the applicant comes up and makes the request for, to reconsider it, as long as the advertising's correct, which we've already advertised the rezoning.
And as I understand it, as long as you're a less restrictive in this kind of.
And it is less restrictive. It's not more restrictive.
You're able.
It's less.
The council can, at its discretion, in this case.
In this case.
Make it less than.
Yep. And they did suggest the fact that they would welcome an R-12.
But in your description, Councilman, are you saying that both proposals are before the council?
I would say that's correct.
Okay. I don't quite understand, based on your usual way of handling things, but.
We don't usually have a builder to come in and say, we will do this, uh, for the neighbors that asked for it. That's, that's unusual.
But I mean, I get, I gather, or am I inferring that the question is whether that will appease, uh, improve the, um, uh, situation any with the neighbors? Even though he described it as not having made any difference in the presentation to a small group of them. That's still pending.
Exactly.
All right.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go across the room. We'll start on the right-hand side and go row to row. Uh, we allow three minutes for discussion. Uh, people have asked us before why they get 20 minutes and you get three. But when you add all y'all together, it's going to be a little bit more than three. When you come up, come up, sir. Uh, when you come up, give us your name and your address when you get up to the podium.
My name is Tom George, and I live at 2498 Whispering Hill Drive.
And when you start, say that, she's going to start a, a three-minute clock. See that?
Okay, sure.
Okay. Thank you. Nice to see you here, sir. Thank you.
Almost 20 years ago, we bought and paid full price for a community, a property, and proceeded to double the size of the house to meet our needs, to be a part of Woodshire. Here are some thoughts on Woodshire. You have copies coming around. I'd like you to have those to keep. With, there's been a lot of discussion, obviously. Woodshire residents are not opposed to thoughtful plans and executed development. For 40 years, the residents of Woodshire have lived with and enjoyed the visions of developer Thomas Fury, who saw Alaman's County growing and its various small towns merging into one megalopolis. He desired to preserve the best of the past and blended gently with the promise of the future. That resulted in a wooded estate of substantial homes, each sited on two to four acres. Thoughtful and limited subdivision ordinances have assured the community's longevity, preserved its environment, and sustained peace and harmony among its long-term residents. 23 homes are occupied today by diverse and responsible citizens and share a common philosophy of property management and community. No HOA has ever been required to maintain harmony. Historically, when properties change hands, the dates on mark, days on market are limited. Often selling at full price or above for, before the sale signs are put in. An original agreement among residents and neighboring farm properties included non-state maintained paper right-of-way designed to provide common access for the Terrell residents and the adjoining farm of Lacy R. Holt. This understanding assured convenience to access for both parties. Those succeeded you, through the succeeding generations, this arrangement has been honored. On April 11th, 2012, 40 years of peaceful coexistence came to a blinding halt. On this May, on this date, five of the 23 residents of Woodshire were invited to attend an information meeting in Memick. Five. At this meeting, Glenwood Homes of Raleigh, in conjunction with the City of Graham, proposed a 57-acre, 175-home development on the Lacy R. Holt property. In order to provide, in order to provide main access to this new development, Lacy Acres, they demanded the opening of the paper right-of-way that so long was an agreement, a mutual agreement between two parties. The following morning, on April the 12th, the town of Graham placed a rezoning sign on the former access. The sign announced proposed R-9 zoning rezoning and a meeting on April the 16th before the planning commission for approval of said rezoning and the absorption of the property into the town of Graham. The close bond enjoyed by Woodshire community and a late weekend mailing from the town of Graham allowed only 24 hours' notice, and it assured a majority of the residents were present for that meeting. Here are some of the concerns we presented. Original roads designed to flow with the topography, preserve the integrity of the natural environment, and 23 residents are totally inadequate to provide public access to such a large new development. I have two more points if you'll let me make them.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
New construction and the additional residential traffic generated by Lacy Acres is estimated by the, of the North Carolina Department of Transportation to increase by tenfold the pressure on the existing roads. Legal counsel has advised the residents of the futility of opposing these invasive and destructive changes by the developer in the city of Graham on properties that have existed in Alaman's County for 40 years in perfect harmony. Facing this challenge, the residents are requesting that we stay at our 18 zoning as a last-dish effort to limit traffic and general disruption of community life, preserve the safety of our families, and minimize the destruction of the natural habitat and wildlife that has so thoughtfully and curiously been preserved for, for the years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else on that row? The next row, second row.
Thank you for extending my time.
Come up, sir, if you would. Let us have your name and address, please, sir.
Hello, I'm Dr. David Johnson, 986 Stonehaven Drive in Woodshire State.
Nice to have you here.
The established communities of Valley Field and Woodshire Estates do not wish to have Chartwell and Stonehaven access for the proposed Lacy Acres, as well as we do not wish these three parcels of land to be rezoned from R-18 to higher-density zoning. We feel strongly that R-18 zoning should remain on these lots to complement the adjacent neighborhoods, to keep the volume of additional vehicle traffic as low as possible, to provide walkability, decrease the risk of flooding, maintain green spaces, mitigate environmental impacts, protect the peaceful nature of rural areas, as well as protection wildlife that call this area home. So we are currently seeing a drastic increase in speed and scale in this urban sprawl, which is very close to our neighborhoods. Uh, for example, along Rogers Road and corner of Lacy Holt and Monroe Holt Road. We acknowledge that growth is inevitable, but we do wish to preserve the integrity of both neighborhoods regardless of living in city limits or ETJs. We believe keeping the R-18 zoning intact would accomplish this, along with building quality homes that would match and benefit both neighborhoods. A prime example of this is the Lacy Ridge homes that were developed by Chris Faust recently along Lacy Holt, which are approximately half-acre, and Knightdale, which are a minimum two-acre lots. So finally, in evidence of what we're saying is that members of Woodshire neighborhood spoke to and visited property owners of both established communities of Valley Field and Woodshire Estates. They spoke to 99 property owners who have signed a statement that they do not wish to have Chartwell, um, or Stonehaven access for the proposed development of Lacy Acres by the developer Glenwood Homes. Only two property owners were indifferent to this. So it is clear that the overwhelming majority of these property owners object to this request for the rezoning of these three parcels of land from R-18 and accessing these parcels through either Chartwell Lane or Stonehaven Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Anybody else on that row? Come up, ma'am. Nice to have you here, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Thank you. Shao Ping Johnson, 986 Stonehaven Drive, Woodshire. We strongly oppose the proposed Lacy Acres, 57 acres, to use the Stonehaven Drive. Woodshire is in county with only 23 families, with lots about one to four acres. Streets are narrow, twisted, up and down. One NCDOT sign says 20 miles per hour. No sidewalks. We take walks on streets, day or night. Most owners are elder and retired. We drive 10 to 15 minute, 10 to 50 miles per hour when we see someone walking with 10 to 20 times more traffic from proposed Lacy Acres. Someone going to be injured soon. By City of Graham Development Ordinance, only the subdivisions with 25 or more properties are required to have two roads for in and out of traffic. Woodshire is not required to have another road. Valley Field has three road stops on the western side of Paperstone Drive, connecting the vacant land of Valley Field. A developer has been checking out the land. When this land is developed, Valley Field and the 57 acres will have more roads for in and out of traffic. So there are no, not really any reasons for traffic from 57 acres getting to Woodshire. We want to point out the faults at Alaman's of Rogers Road. A new subdivision approved by City in 2017 with 101 homes has only one road in and out. The Rogers Springs of Rogers Road, just approved by City Graham in September 2018, with 170-acre homes, has only one road in and out. Information for any developers, if they are still interested in 57 acres and want to use the Stonehaven Drive, NCDOT will not build or maintain sidewalks. City of Graham will not build and maintain sidewalks. So any developers would have to build and maintain sidewalks in Woodshire. Graham 2035 comprehensive plans calls for more communities with sidewalks. No one should bring in heavy traffic flowing into our neighborhood, but not provide sidewalks. We will be forced to give up our working rights on our streets out of fear for our safety. NCDOT also says the developers should end an entrance land and an exit land on Lacy Holt for the traffic in and out of Knightdale Drive. May I have one more minute?
No, ma'am. You have one more point.
One more point. Okay. My property and four neighbors' property are bordering with the Big Alaman's Creek and in 100-year flood zone. And, uh, last year, when Hurricane Florence stormed our area, the water level was just two, three inches below our crawl space, ground level. So if the run of water in Lacy Acres not handled well, and, uh, our houses will be more likely to be flooded.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Anyone else on that row? The next row, then. Anybody on the third row? Fourth row. Be the fourth row. Come on. Yes, ma'am. Good to meet you.
I just have a simple question.
Name and address.
Marie Tony, 2517 Covington Loop. How many developments do you know of where you have to actually drive through that development to get to another development? We're Valley Field. We're a done development. Lacy Acres is a new development. Why? It doesn't make sense to me that they drive through our neighborhood to get to their development. Where's their sign going to be? Where do you tell people? I live in Lacy Acres, but you have to drive through Valley Field to get to my house? And I don't, really don't see how in good conscience you all can vote for a new development that's going to disrupt two already established neighborhoods. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else on the fourth row? On the fifth row?
Uh, my name's Bonnie Whitaker. I live at 2456 Greenview Drive in Valley Field. And I'll be brief since this is only dealing with the rezoning. I have lots to say about the neighborhood, but I'll wait. So anyway, um, I just want to reiterate what, what this lady just said. You know, and maybe it's the Air Force in me. I was in the Air Force for 25 years. And when I retired, I retired to a small community, nice, quiet little town. I drive 60-mile round trip to go to work every day and back. I do that because I like my little, small community. That's why I picked it. It's quiet, cul-de-sacs, limited traffic, a real family feel to it. Never before in my life, and I've lived a lot of places and a lot of different neighborhoods, a lot of different developments, never in my life have I seen where you have to drive through another subdivision to get to another subdivision, to get to another subdivision on the other side. I mean, it just defies all logic and reason to me that we would do this. And you would put an R-9 high-density, you know, area, zoning area, with an R-18 on the other side of it, like Woodshire. Uh, yeah, and they go beyond R-18, and I, I think their smallest lot is like two acres, um, if I'm not mistaken. And the other issue I have with this is they proposed an R-9. Now they're standing up there going, "Well, we might be willing to go to an R-12." Now, that's not what they submitted. And again, maybe that's the military in me. But they submitted for an R-9, and that's what we should be looking at tonight. Not their little, little song and dance they did with this new diagram, which they didn't bother to turn around and show to anybody but y'all. And they didn't really give anybody any time to prepare for that, you know? Because really, they're just kind of throwing it out there, like, "Look what we're willing to do." You know, so I, I just think that, uh, the proposal was for an R-9. I'm totally against it. I think it's just. I think it should stay an R-18, just like it is right now. And like I said, we don't want them accessing their neighborhood through our quiet little neighborhood. And the rest of it, I'll save for later. Thank you.
Anybody else on that row? How are you, ma'am?
Good, thank you. My name's Leah Dool. I live at 2412 Chartwell Lane. This is directly going to impact my family and my children. I come from a city, a big city. And when we moved to Graham, we enjoyed it because it's small, it's family-oriented. This is about money, and it's not about what's best for the families. This is a small neighborhood. We have one entrance, one exit, and it's hard enough coming in and out of those with cars parked on the sides of the street to safely come around corners and for our children to safely cross the street. What the proposal is giving us is an extreme increase in traffic. Although I know that these things have already been picked up, you're talking about adding plus to 600 more cars on our short street alone. That is a huge impact for the safety of our children, the safety of us pulling it out of our own homes. Graham has always been a family-oriented city, and I hope that that's taken into consideration when you look at the safety for the entrance and the exits for this new neighborhood. Not only aesthetically is it going to be tacky, as it already has been brought up, it's also going to cause that small-town, small-neighborhood feel from both Woodshire and Valley Field to be lost somewhere in the mix. That's really all I have to say about it.
Thank you, ma'am. And on the next row? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Patrick Moorfield, 2705 Pepperstone. Patrick Moorfield, 2705 Pepperstone Drive. Can I address a question to the city planner?
Yes, let's don't start the clock till he does that question.
Okay.
Go ahead, back to three.
So, I'm looking at the packet for tonight's council meeting, and I'm on page 37, which is 37 of the 50-page packet, which is part of the staff report.
That's the staff report for the subdivision and not the rezoning?
Okay. Yes, yes, it is. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, in the middle, there's some bullet points for the applicable strategies that, and policies that are part of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The first bullet point, policy 3.2.3, "Fewer dead-end streets. Discourage or prohibit the development of cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets in new projects." And then, if I understand this correctly, the, the city planners put in the common in italics, "This proposal permits redundant access to all but a few lots and will reduce the bottleneck which exists at Valley Field." I was looking for an explanation of what that means. It seems contrary to what we in Valley Field experience.
The reduction in the bottleneck is that the existing bottleneck exists up at Lacy Holt. This will move it down just past Chartwell. After that bottleneck, you will then still only have one access on Pepperstone to get to the balance of the Valley Field subdivision. However, the portion of Chartwell and Pepperstone will have two ways to get in and out, rather than just that one existing bottleneck.
All right. All right, listen. This gentleman has the floor, okay?
So, I, I believe that most of my neighbors and I-
Okay, let's start the clock now. Okay? Now, sir.
I believe that most of my neighbors, I agree with all my neighbors that have spoken already, so I don't want to repeat anything. I think our, our feeling is that this bottleneck that existed, if I understand you correctly, you're talking about this gives us another access.
Yes.
But not until you get up to that block right before Lacy Holt. So, for the vast majority of the neighborhood, it makes no difference in that regard. Now, I understand what you mean by bottleneck. Now, what we mean by bottleneck is that end of Pepperstone, we don't, where the curb is, and you're not allowed to have parking on either side of the street, which is contrary to my understanding of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, but it was built before the plan, so I get it. Anyhow, we believe that that first block of Pepperstone Drive is too congested to take on, I mean, right now it's comfortable. Don't get me wrong, it's not overly congested right now. But we can tell that when you double the traffic going through there, that it will-
Especially for Moorfield, just information-wise, that no parking was, it was asked.
Oh, I get it, because it, it's a hazardous curve if you, when you have cars parked there.
Yes.
Yeah, I get it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else on that row? The next to the last row? Nice to have you here, sir.
Hey. All right. I'm Jonathan Holt. I live at 2305 Lacy Holt Road. Sorry if I'm talking a little fast, I'm a little nervous, but-
Don't be nervous. We're all friends.
So, I'm here to speak for the people who live on Lacy Holt Roads. We've heard from folks, my neighbors who live in Valley Field and those who live in Woodshire, but those of us on Lacy Holt, we absorb all of this, and we will absorb all of this as well. And I'm not, I don't live in the city limits. I can't hold you accountable. I can just ask you to account for my life and my needs. So, I'm someone that likes to take walks. And Lacy Holt Road, if you want to walk on the street, you have a death wish. You wouldn't do that. So, I walk in Woodshire, but if you've ever been in Woodshire, you may have seen those are sharp, curvy roads, steep grades. If you're going there at night, you will not see where going. And as is, you have to walk in the ditch when cars are coming. I understand that's the nature of the road. That was done a long time ago, but it is still doable. If this were to happen and that used, used Stonehaven as a cut-through, not only is Lacy Holt even more congested, and there's nothing different about Lacy Holt than it was five decades ago, same stop signs, same connections, same necessary cut-through across the county, you can have all of this development that the community is not built for, that we can't do anything about. We can't, we can walk our own community. I also have a point to make about the environment. We have put so much pressure in this community on the Big Elements Creek and the Hall River Watershed to the point where beyond our sewage spills, I think we have some atonement to make for what we've done to our own local waterways. I know that local government is not responsible for regulating water quality, but please consider that. The animals can't speak for themselves, the water cannot come here and speak, so I am here on my Tuesday night because I want to speak for them. I have an issue with what the development group had to say about the local community. I, I don't appreciate that kind of description where it feels like our assistance of Graham are almost described as inconvenient roadblocks to their large chance to make a lot of money. I understand that they can be frustrating workpeople, but here's the thing, when out-town developers are done, they walk away with their big check. We will be here. We will be here. This decision will last over 100 years from now. So, it's not in their interest to get it right. It's in their interest to get it done, but it is in our interest to get it right. It's in your interest. Graham is a really nice place. I've lived here my whole life, I'm proud of that. I tell people or I meet anywhere, I'm like, "You should go see Graham. Go downtown. You'll love it." And you guys have seen that, too. You're doing good things because that's why it's thriving, and we should be proud of that. But that doesn't mean that every last parcel of open space has this manifest destiny to be a subdivision. I think he had a great idea. I did agree with him. He said, "If these two roads aren't, you know, quit to handle the traffic, well, then that would mean this couldn't be a subdivision." Maybe that's what it means. Not all parcels are built the exact same. And as you've seen, there are some all over the explosive growth of Rogers Road corridor that are happening, that are more convenient to major thoroughfares. This isn't that. I ask you, please, 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 consider pressing pause, because if you don't, this cannot be undone. It is perpetuity. You are the only ones who have any power. We're here begging you because you have the authority, the very awesome authority for land use decisions. And I don't have a PowerPoint. I don't have a fancy graph. I don't have a law degree. I'm just a person who wants your consideration. Thank you, guys.
Let's have your name and address, sir.
Yes, sir.
Follow that one, would you?
My name is Jonathan Miller. I'm with 2419 Pepperstone Drive. My biggest concern is safety. I'm up near the entrance of Pepperstone. I'm probably the fourth or fifth house on the right as you come into the entrance. And already, when I pull into my driveway in the evenings, typically back in, I have to stop and wait because I never pull in on the road and there's not two or three cars already behind me, so I have to wait to back in. In the mornings, there's already so much traffic that I have to wait to pull out to go to work. So, if you add another 100, 200 homes in there, the traffic is just gonna be a huge safety issue for cars coming in and out, and also children playing in the neighborhood. So, I appreciate it.
Well said, sir. Thank you. Anybody else on that row? On the back row? All right, on the wall, then. Hey, you're here, sir.
I want to thank you first off for allowing us to kind of, I know we're gonna beat a dead horse here, and I'm sure you're just as thrilled to be here as we are, but my name is Nicholas Silinski. I live at 2447 Pepperstone Drive. I'm not gonna ask you to spell my last name right. It's okay. My wife and I moved down here about two years ago. We came from Winston-Salem. We came from larger developments, areas that were a lot more constructed. And one of the things we really liked about Pepperstone that really spoke to us in Valley Field as a whole is the community. We moved here, we had a daughter, and I live in an area of the curve where you're coming downhill, you're coming through a curve, and I don't have a sidewalk on my side. So, when I want to go use the park or we want to go walk our dogs, we have to physically cross Pepperstone to get to the sidewalk. So, my biggest concern and some that's been spoken to at this point is the safety aspect of it. You're talking about putting very large vehicles hauling construction goods, things that aren't able to stop very quickly on a roadway that I have to walk through, and sometimes, you know, we don't have the best viewpoints. And then, after the construction points are done, then we're, we're looking at putting all these extra vehicles from, say, an R-9 on there, hundreds of vehicles that I'm gonna have to try to pass through a street with a toddler. So, I, I would implore you in this sense that maybe we can look at this and try to figure out that, yes, if growth is gonna happen, how can we do this safely for those of us who have children in this community and, and are concerned? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Silinski. Anybody else against the wall? Nice to have you here, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name's Jeff Barnes. I live at 2456 Pepperstone Drive. That is the house directly across the opening of Chartwell. I've been there with my wife for about four years. We have a two-month-old and a four-year, or two-year-old and a four-month-old. Just want to express my opposition to the development. I cite major safety issues. We've been there for four years. Like I said, we see all the traffic and all speeding going on. There's a single stop sign at that opening that increasing all that volume one way in, one way out, I can guarantee you, we already talked about stop signs once, and they're not being enough in the city earlier tonight. A stop sign's gonna be enough to ensure the safety of my children with all that increased volume. You know, we're, we're teaching them, you know, look both ways for across the street, but again, children are children. You have that increased volume. Don't see it happening. We're just community of families trying to raise families, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the wall? Come up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Warren Lunnahan, 2420 Chartwell Lane, and I recently just closed on this property. And I was not aware of this potential expansion development going right into my front yard. And I just want to bring up property values. My neighbors have brought up, you know, great safety concerns, the way of life, how inevitably it will change. I, myself, my family bought into a nice, quiet community, and honestly, if I knew anything about this, I never would have bought this home, and I probably wouldn't have looked at Graham as my home. So, I'm, I'm really disappointed, and I, I wish I could have walked away from buying my home, but I, I'm stuck. So, I just want to, you know, just see if you guys would consider, you know, redirecting this traffic away from our communities, you know? It makes no sense to, I think, most of us that you would direct a whole nother ecosystem within two other ecosystems. Honestly, they should have their own entrance and exit. It just makes no sense to put all that pressure on our communities that we bought into. And again, nobody wants to buy a home in a construction zone that will last years. So, that's, that's a big concern. Our property values will go down. We will have a challenge selling our homes if we so choose to. And my last point is cleanliness. I've worked in construction. I see what construction does to communities and developments. There's gonna be clay, dirt, just strewn all over our roads. I want to know who's gonna clean up our roads. We want to live in a nice, clean atmosphere. Is that gonna be the town? Is that gonna be the developer? But we didn't sign up for this. We didn't design to live in a trash can. So, that's a point I would like to have addressed. Who's gonna clean our roads weekly? Because it's gonna be messy, and I think that's something for you to all to consider.
Thank you, sir. Else on the wall? Come up, sir. Nice to have you here, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Stephen Bowles. I live at 2410 Pepperstone Drive. I am the first house on the left when you come in the Valley Field neighborhood. If you ask anyone here, they may not know my name, but they know my children's faces. We play outside quite frequently, and we enjoy it. I can say that with the developments around Rogers Road, I've noticed more traffic already in the morning commute and evening coming home, one. Two, with the potential for increased traffic, I would like to challenge each of you, before you consider a decision or finalize the decision, to come join me at my home between 4:00 and about 7:00. And you can sit in the driveway with me, and we can play with the kids, and you can kind of watch the traffic flow and see what you think. We are blessed with fairly wide roads, pretty nice entrance there. Most people will tell you, I always have a vehicle parked in the front of my home, and that is for multiple reasons. One, I like to keep the driveway a little more free for the kids to play, but it also inherently keeps cars off our driveway if something were to go wrong with the kids. And I'm sure that you all know, a ball rolls out and a kid wants to chase it. Of course, we do take care of our children and teaching them and disciplining them appropriately to help them understand that situation, the risk that's before them. I would just like you to consider that aspect of it. It truly is, I would say, from my perspective, I understand growth, let's bring it on, let's bring more people to the community. I think if you guys can find a way to gain access to this land without utilizing existing established neighborhoods, where this neighborhood that's being proposed is not a part of either one. If you look at Lacy or at the Valley Field neighborhood, there are intended areas for expansion out to, I guess, the east of our properties. And I think we all knew at some point in time, we would see expansion come to our neighborhood, but it would be something that would be part of our neighborhood, be something that would be part of our HOA. It would be something that would bring additional value to our community. This is not, again, intended to be integral to either neighborhood, and it really, it sets itself apart, and I would say a less-than-value-add approach. So, those would be my two points. One, the accessibility and on the basis of traffic and safety, and on the basis of two existing mature developments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the back wall? And let's go to the front on the left? Welcome, ma'am.
Hi. Hi. My name's Phyllis Holt. I live at 3928 Yount Court in Burlington, and I am the owner of the parcel of land that is beside of Woodshire. Our family moved to Lacy Holt Road in 19- Our family moved to Lacey-Holt Road in 1954. It was a dirt road. It was a farming community with only a few neighbors not being farmers. Over the years, a few more families moved to our road. Around 1970, the road was paved. Sometime in the late 1970s and early 80s, Quell Hollow and Woodshire Estates were developed. There was no public water and sewer at that time, so the lots had to be large enough for wells and septic systems. That added several families to our community. Around the late 1990s, Willow View subdivision was developed that added more families to our community. In the early 2000s, Graham Wood subdivision was developed, adding more families. Also, in the early 2000s, Valleyfield was developed, adding 171 families to our community. Around 2005, more developing occurred at the Monroe-Holt Road end of Lacey-Holt Road, adding even more families to our Lacey-Holt community. To the original residents of Lacey-Holt Road, none of this developing was desired because it changed our neighborhood. But these changes were far from disastrous to our community. As far as I know, the property values have not declined because of these changes. Lacey-Holt Road is a very desirable location to live. That's why it's growing. It's convenient to I-40, Highway 49, Highway 87, and Highway 54. It's also convenient to Chapel Hill, Greensboro, and Durham. Lacey Acres will not destroy anyone's neighborhood or property values. It will only change the traffic on Lacey-Holt Road. And the traffic will only directly affect 13 families in Woodshire Estates and 40 families in Valleyfield. From a tax standpoint, it makes sense to develop these 57 and a half acres. Currently, the taxes on these three properties paid to Almanzt County in 2018 totaled $1,583. Depending on home values and Lacey Acres, the taxes paid to the city and county, City of Graham and Almanzt County combined should be around half a million dollars year after year. It simply makes sense. Also, the residents of Lacey Acres will support the local economy by buying their groceries here, buying gas here, going to restaurants here, buying furniture, buying from Lowe's and Home Depot and shopping at local shopping centers. Think of Lacey Acres as the final phase of the development of Lacey-Holt Farm and Valleyfield as the first phase. Once development of Lacey Acres is complete, I believe this will become a unified community once more.
Ma'am. All right, y'all. Let's be courteous to each other, okay? We're going to be courteous to you, you be courteous to everyone else. Anybody else on that row? Eric, your row? Come on, ma'am.
Sandra LaFrancois. I live at 973 Stonehaven Drive.
Nice to have you here, ma'am.
If you don't mind, I'm not going to look directly at you because I'm going to read from my notes. I have a tendency to go off topic and, you know, enough is enough. As I understand it, the City of Graham has absolute power to decide at their discretion to either grant, deny, or alter any issue before them, including rezoning, regardless of public opinion from those, that those decisions affect the most. The developer has said they don't need permission to cut into Stonehaven Drive because they already have, I don't know, some right-of-way or something or other. I don't know. Well, that's lovely. But you know, if I see a quarter on the ground, that doesn't mean I have to pick it up. I can walk by it if I choose to. Now, I own 10 acres of landlocked land. That's my problem. I'm not making it anybody else's problem just so I can make a few bucks. I mean, why should I make other people suffer from my own stupidity? I ask the City of Graham to consider the well-being of us current residents instead of focusing only on the needs of the city coffers and any developers. They're not going to stay here. We are. If this housing project is approved, I only see one explicit outcome. And that's whomever buys into it has the privilege, I mean, the privilege, guaranteed privilege, of choosing their environment and not having it blown up in their faces at a later time. And that's about it. Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? Eric, you have a speak? Anybody else on that row? On the third row?
I'll just hand them down. Thank you so much for giving us a voice tonight. Can't tell you how much I appreciate that. My name is Mary Taylor, 974 Stonehaven Drive. Carla Sevila, the owner of Glenwood Homes, requested that we visit their new Ashbury community in Meban, stating that it was a similar representation to the proposed Lacey Acres. So I did. I spoke to property owners and, including a police officer, stated that this neighborhood had some problems. They had some things that were taken from the porches, some speeding, littering, and loud music. While in Ashbury, I witnessed somebody, it's a standing there, just throwing a ceramic bowl in somebody else's lawn, shattering it and breaking it into millions of pieces. With these concerns, I went to the Meban and Graham City Police Department. I secured some event reports, just out of curiosity, for the last five years. I got them for Ashbury, Valleyfield, and Woodshire. This report includes event calls to the police departments. While reviewing this data, it became clear that the Ashbury community had significantly more crimes and events than Valleyfield and Woodshire neighborhoods. They consistently had higher numbers of thefts, the home alarms going off, traffic stops, as well as car accidents, which included multiple hit-and-runs. I am certain that most individuals in Ashbury are very law-abiding citizens and it's disheartening that somebody would distress somebody like that. In direct contrast, our Woodshire neighborhood has had no criminal activity, none. This is objective data that is at public disposal. So I do have copies of these if you wish to see them. So based on these facts obtained from both police departments, it's obvious to me that the proposed new high-density neighborhood will introduce some crime, noise pollution, congestion in an otherwise peaceful and quiet, crime-free neighborhood, thus causing our home values to decrease substantially, impact our quality of life, and potentially putting our residents in harm's way. After speaking with most of Woodshire's residents, it's clear that we're all in favor of growth. We really are. But it needs to match the existing neighborhoods, such as the beautiful homes that was put on Lacey Ridge. I provided you with pictures of Ashbury community as well as the pictures of Woodshire. Please look at those. I hope you take a few minutes because you will see a stark difference between those neighborhoods. While I'm, while I was picking up my pictures from the local drugstore, one of the ladies there, she stopped me and she was like, where were these pictures taken? Oh, can I finish my statement, please?
Get that straight. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So she asked me, she was, where'd you get, where were these pictures taken? And I told her, and she was like, she was shocked. She was like, I had no idea that Graham had such lovely neighborhoods like this. And she was thrilled. At the end of the pictures, you'll see some wildlife. On Sunday, I took a picture of a coyote. And then this morning, I took a picture of some wild turkeys that we have in the backyard. And they come like every day. So she was thrilled that we still have wildlife here in Graham.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here, sir. Name and address, please.
All right. My name is Sam Lamb, 2407 Pepperstone Drive. I'm the first house on the right. As my neighbor Steve has stated about his little kids, I'm here with two of my four tonight, which are, I'm sorry, I don't talk loud, I'm sorry. But I'm here with two of my four kids tonight, which are two and now two months. So I did not understand what he was, you know, him parking his car until my oldest son, who's now 16, loves to play basketball and this ball kept rolling out in the middle of the street. So I kind of had the same idea he had, was his parking the truck. And I'm the first house coming in, and I've only been here almost now two years. I came to this neighborhood with my wife, the same thing they said, which is the family feel. Like, it's a very small neighborhood, and I come from Durham, which is a very bigger city. So we love the fact that this was a very small place and a very old feel. Love what you guys are doing downtown. We are very attracted to this area and we really do not want to leave. But at this rate, I think you're going to drive out more of your people who's been here for years and supported this city because of this change. Again, just like everybody else, we understand the money aspect. We understand the growth and, you know, you want to bring more into the city, but you don't want to take the values away from the city. You know, some things, just really morals. I'm really big on morals. So I just really hope you guys take that into consideration. And again, growth is good, just not here. Thank you.
Anybody else on Mr. Lamb's truck? Yes, sir.
Randy Taylor, 974 Stonehaven Drive. I don't think I can say anything better than these people have. I would like to recognize Mr. Holt. I don't know if anybody here knows who he is and who, what the relationship to this whole issue is, but can you explain that? I don't know if you knew that or not, but I've seen him walk the neighborhood since he was a young kid. My wife and I walk the neighborhood quite a bit. So I don't think I can add a whole lot to what's going on here. But allowing that much traffic through our neighborhood on Stonehaven Drive and Whispering Hills is going to completely eliminate our desire to walk. We walk all the time. We have dogs. We walk all the time. Occasionally, we'll ride our bicycles, but that's when we feel good. We're getting older. So I think when the, I've heard the stub of Stonehaven Drive was designed to cut through at some future date. That was a long time ago. Things change. I think it's, it's an easy idea to go ahead and set up a future neighborhood. It's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. But I don't think that road is good for our neighborhood. It's going to change the entire character of our neighborhood, which we've all worked long and hard to achieve, to live in a place that we enjoy so much. And you've heard it tonight, that we all thoroughly enjoy it. One other topic I'd like to hit on is the, I read through the planning guide, the 2035 Planning Guide that Nathan so generously mentioned to me that I didn't know about. However, one of the topics that has just been touched upon is the natural habitat there. It's pretty diverse. I mean, on any given day, you can see a family of deer, wild turkeys today, peacocks, which I didn't know were in the wild in this area. We've had foxes, we've had coyotes. You name it, we've had it. And at night, we can open our windows and listen to the owls. It's just a serene place to live. And I think that you have to ask yourself, can you do this? Yeah, well, you can cut a road through. And it was designed to be cut through, but is it the right thing to do right now? And I understand it makes your jobs more difficult, planning city budgets and all that. But we all have difficult times in our lives, right? I just don't think it's the right place and the right time for this particular thing. One last statement. When John McCain was running for president, I had the opportunity to meet with him and speak to him on several occasions. And just, I wrote down, I'm about to run out of time. Can I finish this real quick? Just 10 seconds. I talked to him about his ideals for running a government, and he offered me this statement. He said, you know, "A noble thing for a government to do is to protect citizens and do what's right for the citizens and also to do no harm. And that neighborhood will do harm if you run it through our neighborhood in Valleyfield." Period. The change of characters of the neighborhood. You have to look into your hearts and do what's right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anybody on Ricky's? Mrs. Ricky, come on up. Mrs. Hollis, good to have you here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. My name's Judy Hall, 2501 Pepperstone Drive. I'd like to speak to you on behalf of the HOA board. I'm the secretary there. And I asked, when we had the meeting here down at Holiday Inn, I asked the builder for us for a 20-foot buffer on our common areas. If you look at the map there, the pond, we have a large pond, approximately half an acre, a little bit more. And we have walking trails, picnic areas, benches. These homes are going to back completely up to the edge of that area. And I would like for you all to consider us to have a buffer of 20 feet to hold that natural area. First of all, because our liability could be extremely higher with other people accessing that area that are not residents of Valleyfield. If we have to put up a barrier, that would cost us tens of thousands of dollars to put up a barrier through all of our common area in which we may have to do that. And that's a charge to us. We maintain all of that. We just spent about $18,000 over the last three years just on that pond area alone, putting in the dam and the riprap, maintenance of it, those kinds of things. We do spend a lot of money on our common areas. Our front entrance is going under a new construction now, our upgrade. We put in new signs. We have $6,000 worth of landscaping that's coming to our front entrance also. We want the area to remain unspoiled, unfrenched by any residents of other subdivisions. Let's see, what else I want to tell you? Also, that call to end the Chartwell, a lot of people did not know that that was more of a stubout. We have considered that the part of Valleyfield since we've been there. And a fence was erected about 13 years ago. Flowers have been planted. And the HOA has maintained the grass in that area, not the city. We have taken care of it. As far as the traffic is concerned, probably about 12 years ago, we had a community yard sale, which probably about 10 to 12 homes participated. What happened in that event is we had more traffic in that area than we could handle. I had a visitor at my home who left, and 30 minutes later, they called and said, from my home, they had gotten up to Chartwell and they could not get to Lacey-Holt to leave. 30 minutes later, we finally called the police and the police cleaned out the area and told us we could not have anything like that again because we could not handle the traffic. That's just a statement that's true. I mean, that's not a personal idea of mine about traffic. That happens. When you do park on that road, then there is parking on the street. When someone is coming this way and someone's coming out the direction, you have to wait to pass. And it could be a long distance, but you have to wait to pass one at a time. That's just the way it is. Come out and look at it, and you will see what we're talking about. Also, the covenant, we have covenants and bylaws, and we're restricted. The new one may not. And they could cause an aesthetic implement to us that would be very detrimental to us. We don't have metal buildings, boats, trailers, that kinds of things because we're so restricted and they may not be.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else on Ricky's row? The next row, come up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Trener. I live at 2622 Pepperstone Drive. I'm the president of the HOA in Valleyfield, and I don't have a whole lot to add along the lines of what everyone else has already stated much more eloquently than I can. I have one question for Mr. Page, if it's okay.
Yeah, let's stop the clock, okay? Ask the question.
So my question is, I've only been in Graham a couple of years. So back when Valleyfield was first developed, was any discussion given to the fact that you've got this big landlocked parcel between a area that was already developed and a development that was being proposed? And was any consideration given to maybe developing inside-out rather than outside-in?
I was here when that was happening, and Valleyfield was protested just as big as this is being protested, but the stubs were put in there to develop that landlocked face.
Right, but the point I'm making is that if you had developed that area first, the area that's now under consideration, there wouldn't have been anybody in what's now Valleyfield to be inconvenienced by the development. You see what I'm saying? You'd have open space where Valleyfield is now. The trucks could come in from that side, build all they wanted, and not impact anybody now.
We would have a different group of people here.
Well, perhaps, but the point I'm making is, it was the decision of the town back then, whoever made the decision, to develop in the way that they did, causing this area that's essentially landlocked, other than these two stubs. Now, as was pointed out before, there's what you can do legally, which the developer has gone to great pains at every meeting we've been to, to point out that they have the legal right of way, which is fine. There's an entire different consideration. What is right for the people that are already here, that already vote, that already live, buy groceries in this community? And this is going to impact them in ways you've heard. My concern is, five years from now, I don't want a police officer coming up here and telling you that there's been accidents in our neighborhood because one hundred and seventy more homes were built with no other way in and out than through our area or an even worse area through Woodshire. Those roads, I don't care how deep the asphalt is, how strong they are, they are not meant for the number of homes that you're talking about. I've seen, I've driven it myself, there's a twenty-degree or twenty mile an hour recommended turn. It's a hairpin turn. I barely got through there without worrying about hitting someone walking on the side of the road, and I was doing twenty miles an hour. You can't tell me that every dump truck driver, every electrician, every lumber truck that's going to try to go through there is going to take that turn with the same care and safety of the people that live there and have to walk those roads. It's just not going to happen, and one death or one injury is one too many. Okay, it's not worth a million dollars in tax revenue a year. It's just not. And that's what I'm concerned is going to happen. I live way down Pepperstone. The traffic isn't going to affect me. My concern is for my neighbors and for their children. Trying to get in on Chartwell, I mean, I just don't even see how you're going to turn a truck into that road. I'm not necessarily opposed to developing the area, but it needs to be congruent with the neighborhoods around it, and it needs to be, there needs to be another way in, especially for the construction traffic, but even afterwards for the people getting in and out. I don't, I'm not, I don't know who owns what land. I don't know what all the politics there are, but I know, looking at the land, it seems like there's a way that you could stub in at the top of Nightdale and find another way into that area. And when I presented that idea to the developers, their response was essentially, "We don't have to. We have two roads." And I get having access there is one thing, but again, doing what's right for the community is just as important and should be your primary focus, not how much money the town is going to make off the develop. That's all I have to say.
How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors. My name is Seth Garrapy, G-A-R-R-E-P-Y, 2451 Pepperstone. I'm a relatively newcomer, a relative newcomer to Graham. I moved here in April of last year. This is my first house. I previously lived in Pittsburgh and worked for the county down in Chatham. One of the things I would like to raise as a point of concern and a question of fairness and transparency is the request that they made here in the meeting to rezone to an R-12. Due to the development guidelines that you have, that there are certain amounts of time that have, those ideas have to be published for public meeting. I would like to ask that those, that proposal be written down, along with that and the construction road that they're talking about trying to put in and not using Chartwell or Stone, the other road, excuse me. And put that in writing, but have it then go back through zoning and planning to have come up through the proper approval process, instead of making an ad hoc request here of you all tonight, which I'm sure that y'all are more capable to reason through that, but there may be other implications that we haven't considered. Also, the question that was posed to the builders regarding the bonding of the streets was artfully dodged by the individuals that were present here from the builders. I would like to see if, as part of this, we can have a clear statement of responsibility regarding owner grievances that might need to be aired as part of this, some sort of oversight from y'all that we can provide direct input as means of feedback. I live in 2451, which is on the corner of Chartwell and Pepperstone, so I would be directly impacted. My wife and I haven't yet started our family yet, and we are considering starting it, and we were in large part choosing this area because of the relatively low traffic and the beauty of this area. So I'm not making an argument based on, per se, just aesthetics, but as well as the statistic that was cited earlier regarding a potential increase of ten times DOT traffic that might occur on the road according to DOT. My last point, and I'll make this in closing, is, yes, I will agree with Ms. Holt that growth is inevitable. However, in my trade as a network engineer and architect, my job is to provide smart growth and outgrowth from existing structures. I would argue that the growth that we need for this community, as evidenced by the pushback that is seen by my colleagues here tonight, is necessary to give you an idea that we all have this groundswell of emotion, but also founded in concern that we need smart, harmonious growth, and we need to rezone in that R-12 fashion if they want to do that in the proper channels. Thank you very much.
Anybody else on that row? In the next row? Come up, sir.
Mayor, I've been before you before.
Yes, sir.
And I'm here again, and I'm going to make it short and sweet.
Well, let me have your name and address.
Tom Balchin, 2361 Nightdale Drive, Graham, North Carolina, in the Woodshire subdivision.
Yes, sir.
And the event before was with the development of the property on Nightdale Drive that Chris Faust developed. He came with the first proposal, and we argued against it. And so he agreed to come back with a second proposal, and we accepted it. All of this was done with the planning board, and then we appeared before you, and everything is done well. Chris did a great job, and I can't say enough about him.
Standing back there getting his head swelled, but go ahead.
My interest is the traffic flow because the streets of Woodshire subdivision are built for a small community, twenty-three homes, they said, and that's what they're built for. There are two blind curves, there are two blind hills, and I'm concerned about the safety of the community and everyone in the community that visits the community. And with those, this increased traffic flow, my anticipation is that we've got an accident waiting to happen in putting all of these vehicles on the street there. So that is a major concern of mine, is the safety. Yes, there may be some valuation effects long-term, but the traffic flow will dictate the value. If the traffic flow is intense and heavy, it will decrease our values. But the traffic flow and the safety is why I'm there, and I've been there since nineteen eighty-five. And I've traveled in New York City, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Quebec, Canada, Hong Kong, China, Bangkok, Thailand, so I've traveled all over the world. So I know what it's like to be in high-traffic areas. And that's the reason I'm in Graham, North Carolina. I love it there. I intend to stay there. I'm seventy-seven years old. So this property that I live in may be what pays my long-term care for my wife and I if we have to go in that direction. And that is a value issue there. But I ask that you place strong consideration on the welfare of the Valleyfield and the Woodshire subdivisions in what you do. Thank you each for your consideration.
Anybody else on that gentleman's row? Nice to have you here, sir. Let us have your name and address, please.
Richard Turrell, nine-ten Stonehaven Drive. I've been in Graham a long time. I've got a business in Graham. We went out when Tom Perry was building this section, and when it got down to the intersection, it was rocks as big, half as big as this building at the intersection. I'm not even on a lot, and I've got four acres because we built on the backside, and that's where they're trying to put the road. I've been there thirty-seven years, and I've never seen nothing but the deer pass by. But anyway, what I was going to tell you, it is a tough place. It's got some blind areas. I mean, tough places. You meet the trash truck in the curve up there. You ain't got nowhere to go. You got to go on the side of the road and let it by the school buses. I don't know how wide that road is, but it's sure not wide as other roads. But I just wanted, you know, I hate to see it built up because when we got there, the wife wanted that lot. I've got, if you go out and look at nine-ten Stonehaven Drive, that's where the road that they're trying to, and that's supposed to have been for the farm, for the holds. He's still got land there, or one of the peoples got land behind me. But the thing that gets me is, it is the safety of it is what's going to happen, and I wouldn't even be there today, but my wife kept saying she wanted that lot, that lot. My driveway is full of rock. It's a hill in front of my, in front of the driveway this big as this room, and it's rocked. And it's nothing but solid rock there. The whole section is solid rock. And the thing that gets me, I don't know how they'll get through it, because, I mean, Tom Perry was hauling one rock a day on a dump truck, and that's when I bought the lot and told him if I can show you where to put this rock, I'll buy this property. And two of these guys that live beside of me, the rest of the rock is over on them. I don't know if I dumped, we dumped them there in nineteen eighty-three. But the thing I want to tell you, if anybody has not been out there, go out there, it's nothing but trees, nothing but trees. I mean, it's shady ever where out there. I mean, if somebody wanted to cut some logs and that kind of stuff, but the thing that gets me is it's totally different than what you see in these divisions. But I just want to thank y'all. Y'all got your hands full. I keep up with you in elementary schools, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Just for information's sake, we all went out there. We all looked at it, looked at all of them. But we're out there, and we do our homework.
And my strip.
Yes, sir. Both of them. Anybody else in that row? In the next to the last row? Jerome, I know you, but give me your name and address, would you please?
Jerome Naylor, 2345 Nightdale Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I know you've been here. A lot of things have been repetitious tonight, but I am very concerned in our development, the Woodshire development on traffic. My wife and I, we enjoy getting out walking, and we now have a little nineteen-month-old grandbaby that we keep several days a week. She enjoys getting out, riding in the wagon, strolling in the stroller or walking a little bit. And she enjoys looking at the animals on the street, and I'm just real concerned about safety. And we do have older grandchildren like to come out there that enjoy getting out walking and seeing the wildlife and the trees. And again, I'm looking at safety, and it's just not going to withstand that much traffic because it's going to be hard to get out and enjoy yourself like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerome. Anyone else on Jerome's row? And then this? The gentleman in the blue, please? Nice to have you here, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. Danny Simmons, 2405 Whispering Hill Drive, that's in Graham. I'm in the Woodshire Division. You answered my question. I know, and I was going to ask that for y'all. Have you been out to see the stuff? And you said y'all have, so I assume all of you have, right? Yes, okay. That's an encouragement to me, to knowing that you're out, that what you're fixing a boat on, you've actually looked at. I live in a place where it's twenty-three homes. I live in a place where I've been there twenty-two years, but some of my neighbors have been there almost forty years. About seventy percent of my neighborhood is retired. Every day, I can see these folks walk. Some of these people have dogs. There's a few young children that we, I see the kids out there. I raised four myself of this neighborhood. The thing about it is, with twenty-three homes, I know every car goes in, I know every car goes out. I've grown up in the country all my life. I wasn't planning on buying a house there, and I know I wouldn't have if I knew I was going to have to hook on to another hundred and fifty homes, or whatever what the number might be. And the traffic flow is really going to be very, very, very picked up, to the point I think is very dangerous in our neighborhood where our twenty-three homes are located. It was mentioned the trash truck. We have recycling. We have the school bus. And if you've ever been there in that time of day and meet one of them, it becomes a really, a bad situation for just the people in the neighborhood. You have to be on your guard at all times. And I think that's a big problem that we have heard tonight, and everybody's talked about traffic. The second thing is, and you've heard this a bunch, you've heard safety. Okay, I'm not here to repeat safety. I'm here to emphasize safety tonight because I want safety for my neighborhood. I want safety for my neighbors. There's a lot of people here tonight. There's a lot of people that are totally against this thing. If only five or ten people were here to just speak up, I'd say, yeah, those people, they don't know what a good thing is. But there's too many people here tonight that it affects. It affects their families. It affects our whole neighborhood. I'm not saying I'm not for change, but I'm not saying that we need to look at it in a safety manner of how we're going to do this. There's two things I want to say, and I'm done. I agree with Mr. Chip Turner earlier when he said that road in Woodshire would not handle the trucks, one truck a day. So I know that they're not going to bring one truck a day in because it'll take ten years to get it built up. So the road's not going to handle it, and I agree with the planning board the other night when they voted five to two against it. So I feel like that was a point to my interest to say that they agreed with what we said. And I want y'all to take that in heart, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. How are you, sir?
Dropped my paper. My name is Stephen Byrd. I live at 2421 Chartwell Lane, and so this development comes right up onto my land and onto my property. And so that's what I'd like to speak to this evening. Most of my good neighbors and friends here this evening have spoken about a lot of things. They've spoken about traffic, and that's a good issue. I think that's important. The issue of school bus, school buses. They've spoken to the issue of noise, which I think will directly affect my own home where I live. They've spoken to the issue of noise, which I think will directly affect my own home where I live. I'm also concerned about the rock road that's right beside my property because if trucks were to come down that road, we measured it. I also have some documentation. It's not but twenty, twenty feet from the side of my house. And I'd like that to be considered if that road were to somehow be chosen by the county or the town, or however they decided, whoever decides it to come through that area. But I think the most important thing to me is that what you've seen this evening is that both Woodshire and Valley Field are very close communities. They have, they're different in many ways, but they're close communities. And our communities don't think that this is a good decision. And just because there's a possibility for a development, I don't believe that there should necessarily make this decision, that this decision should necessarily happen. I realize that this area is stubbed for a road. I didn't buy the house knowing that it was stubbed. There could be a development going down there. I've been in this house fourteen years. I've raised my children here. I've had my friends here, family, church people at this house. It's a quiet, nice road, and that's how we'd like to keep it. And so we're asking you as the town to say no to this for the good of ourselves, for the good of our community in Valley Field, and also for the good of the Woodshire friends. I think the whole issue of safety is something that everybody keeps saying, but we're just concerned about. But I'm especially concerned because it's right on my, on my back, in my back door. And, and I think, I think that's important for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Anybody else on Mr. Byrd's row? In the back row, Tommy Brand. Come up, sir.
I'm Bob Snow, twenty-four thirty-one Knightdale Drive. I just handed you my speech. It's two pages. I won't go, go through it because everybody's talked about traffic, and that was my whole point.
Yes, sir.
So I cut it down to this. Every time I go in and out, I see nothing but old men walking. They're trying to stay in shape, or kids walking their parents, or people walking their dogs, or... It's like a park on, in Knightdale, on Knightdale. But I did meet with the Seventh Division Engineer for the DOT and the First District Engineer for the DOT last week. Seventh Division is Guilford, Rockingham, Alamance, Caswell, and Orange. And the First District there is Alamance. We discussed traffic. That was my main reason for meeting with them. And I want to change, I want to correct the number that was stated very early here about the increase in traffic. They agreed with what I had been thinking, that the traffic in Woodshire will increase about twenty-fold, up to twenty-fold, fifteen to twenty times of what it is now after all four phases of Lacey Ridge are finished. The roads in, in, in our neighborhood in Knightdale are narrower by about a whole full car length, or car width, or seven feet narrower than what you have in Valley Field. They said that the road is about over, about halfway through its current life before it's gonna require rebuilding. That's another seven years. And I don't know how much this means to you, but, and I wish I lived somewhere where I had a vote for you guys, but I don't. And I hope that you listen to some of the outsiders as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the last row? Okay, did I miss anyone? With that, we will end the public comment portion of this and what we're doing. And remember, right now, we're doing the public hearing to rezone the property. So that does not include the stub ends. It does not include the roads. It's just absolutely rezoning the property. Not, we'll do the rest of it if this passed. If this does not pass, then there's no reason to do the rest of it. So we're gonna close the public hearing, and we will talk about it among ourselves. And we might ask somebody a question, but there will be no input from the floor while we're doing this discussion, okay? All right. What does everybody think? And I'm just telling you, they've got an excellent point.
They got very good points, and...
My point is that the land is gonna be developed, no doubt. And I don't think they're all against development. It's just the in and outs of it.
How many, how many houses are they talking about in this development?
Hundred and forty-eight with R twelve, more than that with R nine, one sixty-five? Yep, yep.
But what would it take to get another?
That's about nine hundred more cars per day.
I know, right? The stub ends are there. I know they are.
And I mean, they're there for a reason. There's plenty of subdivisions, just to answer some of the questions and some of the concerns that I heard. And I tried to take note to all the concerns, but I found that. You know, there are dedicated right-ofways, and those right-ofways, and I understand that over time, you know, you, you forget the fact that they're there to gain access to adjacent property. It's not that this property's landlocked. It's not landlocked. It does have a public right-ofway, sixty foot in Woodshire and fifty foot in Valley Field. Actually, in Valley Field, there's five. So guys, be prepared, okay? Nathan found five. There are four, Ricky. There are four. I found four on the plat that was recorded in two thousand and four. The four that are noted here is Covington Loop, Fairfield Drive, Greenview Drive at the end of the cul-de-sac in Cartwell. Now, those were put in play to gain access to adjacent property, and that gives you access to all the properties surrounding this. So I understand the concern of more traffic, but unfortunately, any growth in the city of Graham is going to create traffic. That's an argument anyone can make. Any growth is gonna create additional traffic. It's not that the roads were not designed for traffic. There's an argument to be made in Woodshire that that was built many, many years ago, but Woodshire's right-ofway is bigger, ten-foot than Valley Field. Some concerns that were mentioned was in regards to floodwaters and development. I assure you that this development's gonna have to meet stricter guidelines than Valley Field did, and stricter guidelines than Woodshire subdivision, much stricter. So the water's gonna have to be controlled better than the two current subdivisions. The drive-through development, we have improved many developments that go through other developments. We just approved one not too long ago in my old neighborhood that went through to gain access to another development. These developments are designed and built with stub roads and right-ofways to gain access to adjacent property so we can expand and grow, so that we can provide the same desire to other people who want to move into these communities and be a part of Graham. Some of the other things that was mentioned, Chris Vouts, who put in for rezoning, actually, if, when he rezoned his property, he maintained the R eighteen in the county, which requires a well inseptic. It requires a much bigger lot. And actually, the front portion of that rezoning was an R nine, where the city was providing services, water and sewer, and et cetera. A lot of people brought up the fact that we have to protect the public's interest, and we do. That is our job. Protect your interests, protect your health, and your safety. But the reality is that we have to also look forward to the future. And as we grow and more people want to enjoy the same benefits that everyone in this room enjoys now. The argument that this is something very different, and what was proposed tonight as a change means that the system works. It means that there was compromise. A developer brought forth something, just as Chris did, and there was a compromise made to try to appease more people to be in harmony with the adjacent neighborhoods. And ironically, the proposal to go to an R twelve open space, which we can only approve an R twelve in the rezoning process, is identical to Valley Field. So these are just some of the concerns I wanted to address and let you guys know that we are considering all your concerns. But I just wanted to give you an explanation as to some of them.
All well and good, but I bring you back to John McCain, do no harm. And to me, it's gonna do harm to some of the people who live in Valley Field.
I'm gonna tell you, Woodshire, Woodshire, Woodshire was built. It was built on a far different standard than it would be today.
It was built in the county.
It was one of the standards, it was state standard. I was there. And it was the, the specifications in the way that street was built. I rode through there today, and I was looking, and I didn't really think that much about it, but now I play it back in my mind. It's probably gonna be about, this new development will create around nine hundred cars a day going in and out of Woodshire and Valley Field when it's fully built out. That's six trips per day. That's what DOT gives each home is a traffic count, six trips per day. That'd be approximately nine hundred, split in both ways. And going back to the building of these streets, I'm telling you, those heavy trucks, you know, there'll be hundreds and hundreds of dump trucks coming in and out, hauling stone and asphalt. It will tear those streets up.
But Chip, you would shut down construction in Graham if that was an argument you made every time a development was put in front of you. Anyone that wants to renovate or remodel a home and has construction traffic coming in can make the same argument.
That's gonna be a bunch of traffic.
It is.
At one time.
It is. Development creates a lot of traffic.
Yes, it does, it does. But I mean, once it's developed, you won't have that much construction, you won't have any construction traffic.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's, that is, I kind of agree, yes. That's gonna be a lot of stress put in, especially Woodshire. Narrow street, probably twenty feet of pavement, maybe eighteen. Gonna put a lot of stress on that, on that development. Heard from y'all, too. What do y'all think?
I'll offer that I started where Councilman Kimery finished, that, that R twelve is in keeping with Valley Field.
But I didn't say it wasn't in keeping.
Right. I'm, I'm still going. It's in keeping with it, and, and I did start there, but, but it, I would not have Valley Field do all the lifting on the traffic. So to, to, for, for the access points, it isn't antithetical, I think, to, to Woodshire. So the density, to me, the, the right-ofways may be pre-existing and built into this, but so was the zoning at eighteen because it was indicative of the area and indicative of what's around it. I think I started in, in the camp of R twelve, but I'm, I'm more in the R fifteen range as a compromise, a logical compromise between, between the twelve and eighteen, kind of like, like Chris did, and like Chris looked at, but then went back to eighteen. That, I'm, I have trouble with this. I think there were some articulate arguments made. I'm a fan of growth. I'm a fan of density, but as Mr. Garretby said, I'm a bigger fan of smart growth and doing it right without disrupting existing neighborhoods with, with residents that have committed to Graham. And this would be a gross move for Graham. It's really not a negative if it gets taken off the board to me. That's my position right now, but I'm listening.
Melody, what do you think?
I think that we've had a lot of good points tonight. You know, the, the interesting thing is, and I'm gonna be really honest with you, we've heard them a thousand times before in every development we've had. I kept looking and listening and looking and listening for something new that we haven't heard before. And every growth of every development, we've heard traffic, we've heard safety, we've heard all of those things. All of those things are considered when they go through our technical review committees, and those things are taken into account at that point. The interesting thing, you know, the, the comment was also made tonight about, look at the room full of people. Gosh, gee, fellas, y'all wouldn't be here if this board had voted down you because there was a room full of people just like this, okay? So bringing that to the table is not really something that we're gonna be concerned with. What I'm concerned with is the walkability and the safety issues. I'm concerned about Woodshire. I'm not as concerned, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not as concerned about the rest of it. I think that, if you'll be quiet and respect, be respectful, please. Thank you. We sat very nicely and professionally and listened to you for two hours. So if you would, please listen to us respectfully. We have, we have several things on the board, but a lot of it's not new. A lot of it is gonna be covered when we start talking about these other places. So, you know, the, the, most of it is not anything new. I can't say that I have heard anything new tonight. I've been out, just like everybody else, and looked at the entire development. And those are the things, your issues of buses, of trucks, of roads, it's all the same, okay? It's true for every other development. I live in, right here in the city, not far from here. Every single day, every single day, there are no sidewalks. Every single day, we deal with the same things that you deal with. You are not alone in these issues if it comes to you, okay? That's growth. That's what growth is, all right? We're in the city, and that's what's expected of us.
I think the difference I see in, in what we're talking about here, we're dumping traffic into a county. We're not putting it on a major street. This is a small county road.
Yes, which is the DOT's responsibility to accommodate our growth.
Exactly.
I understand.
I mean, I'm sorry, but that's the reality. As the school system has to accommodate our growth, and we can't, we cannot stop growing as a result of DOT not doing what they're supposed to do, or the school system not doing what they're supposed to do. So I just want to bring this point up, too, in regards to currently what we're looking at in Valley Field is we've got R twelve against R eighteen. We've got R eighteen surrounding R twelve there. So it's, it, it's not like this is some new piece of the puzzle here we're talking about plugging into this area. We've got R twelve up against R eighteen if we decide to go with an R twelve as an option and not the R nine. Also, too, there was a point brought up about the cost and the money for the city. I've looked at subdivisions, and this pains me to say because I'm a builder and developer, but subdivisions, for the most part, are losers in the city of Graham as far as the cost of services that we provide to subdivisions. Depending on the concentration of the subdivision in our city, Planning Director can comment on that. Probably an R line, R nine or greater concentration is really just a break-even for the city of Graham. Would you not agree with that statement?
That's accurate. In fact, when we had to repave the first portion of Pepperstone Court, it was determined that the value that we got from those homes would never repay what it cost to repave the portion of street in front of their houses.
And unfortunately, we're charging taxes at today's rate, and repaving costs are in the future. We don't know when that's gonna come due, but we know that the money that, that we generate as revenue for taxes in most subdivisions are not gonna be the givers for us. The givers are industrial growth, our commercial growth, our multifamily is givers as far as our tax base. The point was brought up that maybe we should keep it consistent with R eighteen or R fifteen. Unfortunately, R fifteen, even if you were to look at that rezoning, you can't develop a subdivision and it make money and justify going to an R eighteen, certainly not with an R eighteen with city services. That's putting in all the water and sewer and all the streets. It just doesn't work. And that's just the reality of this. So to ask someone to do an R eighteen subdivision or even R fifteen, I can, I can testify to you that the numbers of putting in all the roads and the water and sewer and being annexed into the city, you can't get the return. It's difficult from a development standpoint. The only way that I think this builder can go to an R twelve is to actually build the homes out as well as developing the land. But if it was a development of the land and selling of the lots, it's very difficult to do that just because of cost. So this is not just about money. It's about growth, and it's about providing homes to people that are looking to come to Graham now. And we know that because we're growing. So that's what it's more about, is not putting money in our pocket, but bringing people into the community who can also contribute to the community and have the same experience that you guys are having.
Are you in favor of R nine?
No, I'm in favor of R twelve.
But we've said R twelve is unprofitable, potentially unsafe.
I know. But, but, again, unprofitable to the city of Graham doesn't mean that it brings more citizens that are gonna contribute to the community and bring revenue to the community and be engaged in the community. There, there's a factor there that's, it's hard to determine and put a number on. But as you bring more people to the city and they're engaged in the city, they're gonna spend money. They're gonna get goods and services here in Graham. We can benefit, but not just directly from tax revenue, unfortunately.
But there's lots of ways we can benefit, and I think this area is development-heavy. I think that's a point that also needs to be, needs to be looked at. That intersection of Lacey, Holton, Rogers, I lived within a mile of there, and, and that's fast- needs to be looked at. That intersection of Lacy Holt and Rogers, I lived within a mile of there and, and that's fastly becoming an interchange, but it's not yet. And, and that's, that's a real concern. Frankie's lived down there. We, we're all familiar with the area.
My first home was on Lacy O Road.
That's, you know, we say DOT is reactive or should be. Are they?
Do we think that's gonna change? This land is going to sell. And this land is going to have development on it.
I'm not against the development of it. I don't mean to sound that way. I'm against the access into two existing neighborhoods. I think that's-
I, I agree with that. I'm against the growth.
I know it was set up that way, but the, no offense to y'all, but the people that lived in, uh, the twenty-three homes, they complained about Valleyfield.
Absolutely.
I was here for that and they were in arms. That that was gonna ruin their neighborhood. It did not. And I don't think a, a development here would ruin their neighborhood unless you start dumping traffic into-
Woodshire.
Or Blofo. No, sir. I'm sorry. I know you are. We've on this. Yeah, we know that.
But yeah, Mayor, you, you're exactly right. I mean, I played this, I played this over in my mind over and over.
You worked at DOT. Is there an alternative? I don't know. Frankie, are there alternatives for an access?
To not use Woodshire as a second?
Well, not use either one of them.
There has to be available land.
Wow.
And it looks like if a lot of houses, crossing the creek is not an option.
No.
That, that's, that's out.
So there is no other access?
It would be tough, really tough.
And, and Mayor, I think it's important to note that if we take all the right of ways and we set precedent and say we can't use these future, future developments. I know we're concentrating on this one area. I know that. But we're setting a precedent to say there is four right of ways that are there to gain access for this property in the future, but yet can't use them. I mean, that's difficult.
I understand.
I mean, that's difficult. How do you make that decision today and tomorrow approve something on a right of way? How do you do that? I wanna remain consistent and fair across the board. Everyone that brings a proposal, if they meet certain guidelines, consistent and fair. If you say we can't use these right of ways, four of them in Valleyfield, what are you gonna say in the future?
Yeah, you got a very good point. Uh, but feel that it does harm. John McCain says don't do any harm.
Any, any growth could be argued as doing harm. Now, we, it is very important that we protect the interest of our citizens and their health and welfare. But any development could be argued as creating harm. Any.
Is there any way that the engineers can come back with some other?
Are you gonna go out and buy additional land to put another road into this subdivision with four right of ways coming off of Valleyfield?
Yes.
Hey, you, you got a very good point. I can argue that, but it's just, I, it will, especially in Woodshire.
I know that everyone doesn't enjoy the service that Brian Coleman, as our lawyer provides, but really wish that during closings that things were disclosed to homeowners when they buy property about right of ways and lawyers would disclose that in the future this potential exists. And I know Brian provides that for his clients. And I wish that everyone would have bought a house in Valleyfield, would have understood that these dedicated right of ways are there for a reason.
Speaking of Brian, let's go to him real quickly and Brian, um, tell me our ramifications if we voted this down. What liabilities? What are we doing to ourselves? If they decide, the builders decide to sue us, what happens?
I mean, if you vote, if you vote it down completely?
Yes.
With, without, you know, some kind of reason with the comprehensive plan? I might be honest with you. I'll let Nathan, I, you, you may know the ramifications of, uh, what's required of them.
If it were to be voted down, the consistency statement would have to be complete. You'd have to say why it was in alignment with the 2035 plan and quote how it was in alignment with the 2035 plan. That document would then be able to be challenged in court and would need to somehow match that plan.
Has there been anything put out here tonight that's against our comprehensive plan, in your opinion?
Such as rezone to R twelve?
Right. That, R, R twelve is actually against our comprehensive plan.
That's a matter of, that's a matter of opinion.
But R nine is where it should be.
But has any of the citizens given us a, a, a defendable reason to say no?
I think that NC DOT would tell you that if there's more than four thousand cars per day on one of these roads, that it is nearing capacity. I think that NC DOT would tell you that if there's somewhere north of a thousand cars per day, that these are nearing what would be considered a comfortable neighborhood street. None of those warrants are met by this. There are good arguments to preserve floodplain, to preserve open space. But both, I mean, that's the subdivision rather than the rezoning. And, and so no, I haven't heard any arguments that are against the comprehensive plan made here tonight.
Brian, there's nothing that we've done that's defendable. Is that what we're saying?
That's what it sounds like. Yes, sir.
Mayor, do you entertain a motion at this point?
Um, is everybody finished? All right, I will move you to page thirty-four. And I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move that the application be approved to R twelve rezoning as requested tonight. That the application is consistent with the Graham twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan and that this action is reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. Rezoning this property would be consistent with policy three, three, two and strategy four, one, three of the Graham twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion fails three to two. Okay, so where do we go now? We've voted on a non-defendable thing here. So what do we do?
Entertain a motion for any other, for the other proposed rezoning request?
R nine?
Yep.
Does anybody wanna say anything about what we just did? We're moving it to R nine, change your-
No.
But I will entertain a motion. So I move you again to page thirty-four. Ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application be approved. The application is consistent with the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. I move that it be approved to the R nine as submitted.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a second. Without a second, motion dies for no second. So tell me where we go now, Frankie?
The next item. Pass the subdivision.
Is there a reason to go to the subdivision?
No.
Fine. So.
Um, give us a second.
Okay, work on it.
There's no consistency statement for disapproval.
We're thinking.
There's no consistency.
There is no consistency statement for disapproval.
I think we can defend the R nine, I mean, the R twelve motion. I don't think we could have defended the R nine. Does that make sense? If we said R twelve, I think it would have, it would have fallen into our comprehensive plan where we could not defend a no. But the R twelve, I think we could.
As staff, I would recommend that you have a motion that passes however that motion be framed. It may be a motion to dismiss the application. Period. But that motion, I, I would recommend that you have one that passes.
Okay, so with that being said, I make a motion to deny the request. Let me go to page thirty-four.
No, Mayor.
No, sir.
Procedure.
Procedure.
I, I question the procedure in terms of there is no requirement that the city pass a motion. A motion was made, it failed. As far as procedure, that can be the end of it. I believe that the interjection of some other opinion is not a good legal one, although you have a lawyer here.
I'll go to the lawyer and we'll let him decide on that. What do you think?
Say that one more time.
Should we vote against the motion instead of, should I bring up the motion again and have a, a, a motion and a second to deny?
I believe so. Yeah, I think that would make it much more clear.
Okay, then that's what I'll do. Then I move you to page thirty-four. And I'll ask for a motion. I'll make the motion deny on the fact that the application is not fully consistent with the Graham two thousand and thirty-five comprehensive plan. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye. All opposed likewise. Motion passes three to two to deny. So now I'm gonna go to the public hearing, Lacy Acres, request by Penny to approve the major subdivision.
We don't have to, Mayor.
I know we don't, but we still gotta read it.
Though.
Still gotta, it's on the agenda. We've gotta read it.
We can't even, we can't address?
I know, but we still gotta read it.
Uh, you don't, Mayor. You don't.
As long as it's on the agenda, we got, got to read it and say it's doesn't-
It's not valid anymore.
I know, and that's why I picked it to say it. Give me a second. Anyway, I needed to read that because it is on our agenda. It's not valid. And I'm sure these guys will come back with something, uh, so, y'all watch for it because this is in big demand, okay? This land is in big demand. And we'll continue with this. Come up, sir, if you want to, or who wants to speak. Where's she getting?
Penny's gonna speak to this one, but since that the, uh, the R nine, R twelve rezone was denied, this subdivision would not be permissible under existing zoning. Anything else to add, Penny?
I have advised the client, Glenwood Homes, that, um, the current zoning is not feasible with, um, public utilities to continue with the project.
So what it does puts in your ballpark a way to find another entrance.
Uh, sir, if you'll look at the piece of property, there are lots on every single edge of that property.
I understand.
I am, I am a professional engineer. I have done this a long time. And to deny us access to use existing right of ways is turning land planning on its ear. I'm, I'm done.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
I would just reiterate what my engineer Penny has stated. Um, again, I've also been doing this a long time with even larger builders that don't necessarily have the heart that I feel that my company has. Um, I'm a local builder. Been working with Penny and my partners and we do this with adjoining subdivisions all the time with existing right of ways. And to have the vote come the way it did with the existing right of ways in place, commensurate with R twelve right next door and actually less dense than what you've asked in your comprehensive plan, this is a very first for me. So I'm having to take a step back to understand how could I have done this better? I felt like I was aligned with what the city of Graham wants in their comprehensive plan. We did two neighborhood meetings to try to appease the homeowners in Valleyfield and the adjusting the other neighborhood next door. I build a fabulous communities all over the triangle and I've got a lot of happy homeowners. I have four children myself. And so safety and community is my number one priority. I am personally shocked by the decision. I respect all of the council members to, you know, have your own opinions, but I feel at this stage when we do feel like we checked all the boxes, we met with your planner, we've done, spent a lot of time and resources to align with what the city of Graham says they want. I don't know where to go from here, to be honest, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Eric? We allow Eric to speak because he's on our planning and zoning board?
I'm speaking as a citizen. Nothing to do with planning board. My name is Eric Crispin. We live at two oh eight Albright Avenue here in Graham. Uh, Mr. Kimery stated the paragraph and the subparagraph on the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan that this would be in, in accordance with. You quoted the twenty thirty-five plan saying it wasn't in accordance with. What, what paragraphs did you use to quote that twenty thirty-five plan?
If you'd gone to our plan, the R nine would be more reasonable, is all I said. I didn't-
You said in accordance with the twenty thirty-five plan, I vote to, vote to deny this permit, for this plan use. What, what, what paragraph and statute of this twenty thirty-five plan did you use to come to that conclusion? If it's good for, to approve it, how could it be good to disapprove it?
Sometimes the comprehensive plan is, is something you look at and say, well, he's got an opinion on it and I've got an opinion. Eric, I don't have to explain that to you. Even though I will tomorrow, if you give me time to, to go get it, I will explain it to you.
Well, I, I, I'm just curious because we do the same thing. I've heard it up here many times. You know, I, I vote in favor of, make a motion against it. Both according to the same plan.
Tell me why y'all voted against it.
I, I'm not here on, on, as a planning board member. I'm here as a citizen. Just, just wanting to know why the plan is even used. If, if it could be used in two different things for the diametrically opposed view.
Okay. Good question. I don't have a real good answer for you, but it's a good question.
Okay, I, I just, I think we're opening ourselves up to different liabilities if, if we could say we've got it and then you say, oh, no, no, you don't have it because this is my, this is my interpretation of it. That, that, I mean, Valleyview is supposed to be R twelve division. It's not. So we kinda broke the rules there. And, and the R eighteen was a forty-year-old development. The roads, that's the state's problem. That, that, since they've got access to it and, and with four other access, or three other accesses in Valleyview, the same thing is gonna happen again on the other side of that.
It is. And it's coming. But maybe it'll be a lesson that we've gotta get another access somewhere. In my opinion.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but okay. You're gonna go to a homeowner and says, well, we wanna put a road through your home. So would you sell it to us? You, you can't do eminent domain on it.
Wouldn't dream of it.
So, so the whole's just screwed then, right?
I wouldn't have put it that way.
Well, excuse me, uh, they are putting it in, in an untenable situation.
They are. We'll find us a solution. Cause you might be moving it up to the, the top corner so you don't, that access into the one subdivision runs them all the way through all the S's in that subdivision.
Is, is somebody gonna give some land up so you have an access road through there then? I mean, just, you know, you have to look at that option too.
Good argument, Eric. Thank you.
Very much.
Mayor, I apologize for my frustration. I know that sound pretty obvious. I, I apologize to you for that.
We're, we're fine. Me and you have different, sometimes we go different. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, on this topic while we're on the comprehensive plan, I mean, I think, uh, Mr. Crispin has pointed out the, the irony, which is true in every case, is that the majority in essence decides what is or is not compatible with the comprehensive plan. It, it, there is not, because Mr. Kimery read a particular paragraph or two, doesn't make his argument any stronger than the fact that other councilmen, a majority decided it was not compatible. But the more fundamental question I wanna come to, Mr. Mayor, is one, it, I know it's a hobby horse you've heard me ride before, but tonight, a good demonstration of it. There was inadequate, uh, public input into the comprehensive plan. Let me back up. Not just input, insufficient notification. None of the neighbors in either of these subdivisions that were affected by tonight's proposal were notified that the comprehensive plan envisioned a higher density for their, for the adjacent property. Nobody was notified, yet the comprehensive plan, you're shaking your head, there's no notification. None.
Ricky Hall served on that committee.
There is no notification to the public at large, to the community at large, to those neighborhoods in particular, that a piece of property adjacent to both of them was being considered and in fact was included to have a higher density. That's only one of many changes that are in that plan that I think you're gonna run into time and time again because it was not adequately told to the residents and citizens of Graham or in this case, uh, those who are adjacent in the ETJ. that there was a change being contemplated. And then the city acts like it's just bound to stay with the comprehensive plan, a plan that is flawed from the outset by having failed to have had adequate public input.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask that we continue our agenda tonight?
We will, don't worry.
Thank you.
He's got a right to speak. Everybody's got a right to speak. Duly noted, Tom, thank you.
May I address something that Tom just brought up there?
You can.
Okay. So, Tom, we, I know that you brought this argument up during the planning process and right after we adopted the comprehensive plan. But I disagree with the fact that we did try to get the information out there and let people know what we were doing during the planning process, which took, what, a year and a half? A year and a half. Now, the idea that this government here would send out a letter to fifteen thousand residents, I don't think that's your intent by saying that we didn't advertise this properly, because I can't imagine how much government cost would be involved in trying to send something out to everyone at their home to let them know we're going through this process. But we did it with advertising, and we did it in every available sector that we possibly could to get the word out there to people and let them know what we were participating in. The reality is, most people were not really concerned about it until it affects them in their backyard, and then it becomes a big concern. By that time, we've already adopted the plan. But I feel like we did a good job of trying to get it out there, Tom. We did.
But that's my underlying point, Mr. Kimery.
Yeah.
Is there's general law.
How do you...
We've got a year and a half, we have a hundred people come to a couple of meetings to talk about the comprehensive plan. But we didn't tell, the city didn't tell people in these two neighborhoods, we're considering...
We told everyone in the city who paid any attention to any of the information that we sent. I'm just asking, Tom, what would be an adequate way to advertise in the future?
If you are changing a proposed future rezoning, in my opinion, you should notify the adjacent property owners.
That would be everybody in the City of Graham.
In the adjacent properties. Well, in this case, it's these two developments.
Yeah, it'd be everybody in the ETJ.
If you've got other places that you're also changing it, you should notify them.
I know, Tom.
It's cumbersome, but it's what...
No, it's costly, and it makes government become bigger and bigger, which I thought you were kind of opposed to, larger government and more cost involved in trying to get people involved. Either they wanna be involved or they don't, and we try our best to get people involved and get them excited about this. It would be more than the citizens. Frankie brought up a good point. That's the ETJs as well. Yeah, even beyond that. So I don't know how far we can reach out and do a better job. I would like to know. I'm open. Give us ways to reach people better than we are reaching them now. I would love for people to be involved more.
My general view, Mr. Kimery, and I've expressed it a number of times, every time y'all consider a comprehensive plan, is when you're proposing or considering a change in the future rezoning, you should notify the people in the same manner in which you would notify them if you had an actual rezoning coming before you.
I know, but the new comprehensive plan changed the future of zoning in a lot of different areas, so you're indicating that we would need to notify...
A lot of people about adjacent properties that are being changed. In my opinion, otherwise, you're frankly gonna go through this time and time again.
We are. Okay, let's stop this now. We've beat this horse to death here. Alright, next, we're gonna go to number five, approved agreement to operate Burlington Animal Shelter and Pet Adoption Center. Frankie, are you handling this for us, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Since two thousand and two, the City of Graham has participated in the animal shelter and the programs associated with the animal shelter. There was an agreement that this council, City of Graham Council, adopted in two thousand and five, I believe, that set forth how the costs for that shelter are to be divvied up among the county and the municipalities participating in the shelter within Alamance County. In about two thousand and fifteen, there was some discussion about expansion of the shelter, and there was also discussion about the cost formula for dividing the operational cost of the shelter among the cities and the county. There was an old per capita rate. The consensus among managers was to pursue a cost allocation formula that was, that mirrored the sales tax distribution formula, which is the revenue side of things, and applying that to the expenditure side, which brings us to where we are today. So the proposed agreement would sets out the formula for dividing the cost of the animal shelter to Graham that, and all cities for that matter, would eventually see a reduction in the share that is required to be paid for animal shelter operations, and the staff would recommend approval.
Mr. Kimery, I think you need to speak on this. You were on that board, weren't you?
I was on the animal shelter board, yes. That was years ago.
Are they changing their policies? Don't we have a rider in there that we, they can't change their, I mean, the euthanasia, I can't say that. Looks like it's changed dramatically. Good thing, I guess, if they're being adopted.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So I think the deeper question there, if you're asking for me to ask a question to Frankie, is just recently, since the county adopted this agreement, there has been, and you might be able to speak on this, there has been some policy concerns? Has any of that been brought up, addressed? Burlington kind of has done a fantastic job. It looks like the results here indicate they've done a good job moving us in a positive direction, but ultimately, the decision is theirs to make. They have to abide by state laws. Please, please allude them. So, there's different components and different viewpoints of animal services. You know, there's the law enforcement side of, you know, dangerous animals or dog attacks, dog bites, or potentially dangerous dogs, as we have here in Graham. There's also the sheltering of animals. So law enforcement does depend on the shelter, to shelter animals, which includes sometimes, well, more often than dogs, cats, including sometimes feral cats. So animal services, they do process a good number of animals that are delivered by law enforcement. And it could be pending trial, pending disposition of the animal. There could be a number of things that they interact with law enforcement, but law enforcement has a mindset and a... And there... Some of the law enforcement side is regulated through Health Department, while animal services is regulated not through the Health Department. So sometimes there's some differences between enforcement and the sheltering of the animals. And it would not surprise me if differences arise each day. But nonetheless, the animal shelter has shown great results in ten years. Euthanias, euthanasia rates are down, intakes are down, if I'm not mistaken. Positive outcomes are up, and I won't go into what the positive outcomes are, but I do think that that's adoption and return to owners, things like that. There are several programs that are also part of animal services in this agreement. I did call out a couple in the staff report, which are the Spay and Neuter, Low Cost Spay and Neuter Clinic and the Pet Adoption Center. So our contribution helps support those efforts as well.
Do you, as you worked on this, do you have the support of the cities that did not support any action like Sweptonville and...
I think they... Most cities, if you ask them and get their knee-jerk reaction is, why am I paying for this? We get nothing extra. Why do I have to pay for it twice? That's the answer I get most often. But when you, we dive into the services that are provided, no one really has a complaint with the services that are provided and the results that we've seen.
Even the cost.
Even, and then when you start thinking about the cost and how we're doing this collectively with the county, I don't know that we would have the same level of service without contributions from all.
Were not our cost before, and the other plan escalating as population went up?
It was escalating quite rapidly. Yeah, one hundred and forty-eight percent in the last fourteen years. And...
But this is a different plan.
This is a whole different plan. This is based on sales tax distribution. It brings the county's total population back into the equation, which, for whatever reason, in two thousand and nine, no one has an explanation. Things changed. Our percentage increased dramatically. So there's a fine line too, Mayor. I just want to mention this to everyone, that the responsibility, and I agree with Frankie, I always thought that the county's ultimate responsibility is health and welfare, and this falls under health. But, but, the general statute says that animal control falls under the responsibilities of the county and not the shelter. So in the past, many cities have had pounds, and I don't like to use that word. Burlington took on the responsibility back in nineteen ninety, the agreement they have with the county to start the shelter.
Yeah, and I think the county closed their shelter.
And closed their shelter.
Seventies or eighties.
Yeah. So the shelter, could be argued and has been by the county, is a responsibility that's not necessarily theirs. Their responsibility is to provide animal services, which we now really don't use because we have an animal control officer. And I think we have benefited our citizens greatly by having that. Our service has picked up as far as animal service. But the shelter is a kind of a different entity.
It's more akin to a hospital
Yeah.
than it is a dog cage.
But this is an equitable and fair way to move forward. This will bring our cost down in four years, lower than it is now, and bring back into alignment, I think, the nature of the original agreement, wouldn't you say?
It also takes out some of the argument about ability to pay. If you're connecting a revenue with the expense, then there's more of an equity in your ability to pay.
As sales tax goes down or goes up, then we'll fluctuate accordingly.
As our share goes up and down.
It is not a desire for anybody to have to put into this, and yes, our citizens are being taxed once. I have a question about. Is this the best scenario that we're probably going to see? Yes, I think so. In the end, it is going to be good for us to see this finally go down.
Population-wise.
Instead of incredibly, incredible increase that we've seen, what you're seeing up there, you know, we're getting ready to see a decrease, and that makes so much more sense of the equitability of spreading it out among everybody, not just one or two entities that we're suffering. That, you know, of course, the county should take more. I totally agree.
And they've taken less through the years.
Exactly.
How does that work?
And it's time, and it's time that they take their fair share, so.
I agree. May not be a fix, but it's a correction, at least. We're getting there. And I don't know how the county, nobody really understands, there's not an answer as to how the county continued to contribute less in the cities all across the board.
It's population-based, and...
It was not... The population of the county is the entire county.
They don't count the citizens of Graham and Burlington.
They are taxed. Every citizen in Alamance County's tax, pays county taxes.
As you subtract Burlington or Graham.
That's not fair. That was not the original agreement.
I know.
That's the way it had been seen in recent years. As the cities grew, their percentage of the total cost grew, and the counties diminished. So it was, in the sales tax formula, all populations are co-mingled. And then you divide, take the county's population and all of the city's population, and you add them together, and you come up with two hundred and some odd thousand. And then you divide your population into that, so your numerator is our population, the denominator is the aggregate of all, which yields a lesser percentage. But that also yields a lesser percentage of our share of sales tax. So if it's good for the revenue side, like, and it'd be good for the expenditure side.
If you go back in early years when it was developed, who was the leading edge of all of the animal shelters? Harold Owen with the City of Burlington. The City of Burlington took on because the four county can't afford their park. So Burlington took over, and then it's, we saw this, what turned out to be at the beginning fairly slight increases, and all of a sudden became very large increases.
Interesting, okay. And I'm very grateful to the county for willing, their willingness to come to the table. They stepped up in the construction of the facility, and they've also stepped up with the operations, and I'm very appreciative. It's not one, it's not ultimate equity for city residents, but it's a step in the right direction, and I have to hand it to the county for their willingness to step up to the plate. I'd also like to say something too, Mayor, if I may, and that is that Frankie has been working on this for years. We have heard this budget year after budget year. And I think today is, should be a proud day for you, because I think you've been very responsible to the taxpayers in City of Graham to be able to get this pushed through. I did what I could do to try to have the county be agreeable with this. And this is gonna reduce our cost. It's over a four-year period, but by the time we get there, it'll be a great reduction in the amount that we're currently paying, so.
Anybody from the floor?
We've been doing this for a long time, so.
I'll make this quick, this is past my bed time.
I should.
Eric Christman, two oh eight Albright Avenue. In twenty seventeen, it says fifteen hundred and fourteen cats were, animals were neutered, I contributed seventeen of those. We've got a bunch of tomcats walking around the neighborhood singing soprano, and they just kind of lay around the porch. So we use the Mighty Mouse Program, costs five dollars a head to neuter an animal, so it's, it's great benefit to City of Graham. And I've told other people, and they've got their feral cats or their neighborhood cats. Some of these belong to neighbors, but they don't know the difference. They're in my yard.
Is the cats, are they working out well to take care of maybe those nuisance around?
Well, I tell my wife, if you feed them, they will come.
They won't leave.
It works for all of us, don't it?
So I put up electric tents in the backyard to keep them from coming in the house.
Okay.
But, yeah, they just lay around the porch, so it works out fine.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on that? With that being said, I need to move you to page forty-three, and I'll ask for a motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the revised agreement to operate Burlington Animal Shelter and Pet Adoption Center.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. And we do want to thank Frankie for all his hard work on this. It's taken several years, but it was sometimes like pushing a rope.
Leave for going to the commissioners as well.
Yes. Okay, issue's not on tonight's agenda. Nathan, anything?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Aaron.
No, sir.
Darcy.
No, sir.
Melody.
Yes, sir, I have three items. I'd like to remind the council about the ribbon cutting for the historical museum on Friday at four P M. Secondly, I would like to commend the Recreation and Parks Department for their recent grant. That is quite, quite an accomplishment, and Frankie, if you'll pass that, kudos on to them. I would appreciate it. Thirdly, Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, we talked about boards and commissions, the volunteer boards and commissions, and a study of those boards and commissions. I have the four-year presentation tonight. I am not going to read it. You are certainly welcome to read it all in its entirety. It's full page and one half. There are notes that were provided for that. However, summary is that we simply got together with, or gathered for, sorry, twelve, a dozen volunteer board members and key staff who work with the boards in getting them together after all these years of listening to and knowing some issues that we've all had before, trying to put together a room and get everything out on the table about what our concerns may be. At this point, my recommendation to you, it came very well. You saw that as your last page of all the things that were discussed that evening. I left in the duplication intentional. Us, it kept coming up. And so there are major concerns that we just need to tweak, and we need to fine-tune some things that we're doing. There are of concern how we operate, how we train, how we prepare our boards and commissions. They are important, valuable individuals to us as extensions of this board, and I think it imperative that we spend more time in understanding for them and their training process so they can serve us effectively. To that end, my recommendation was to, for this board to appoint a certain task force made up of those twelve individuals to continue to study this and come back to a recommendation, with a recommendation to this board on all of those topics that we discussed at that time. In addition to that, I would like to volunteer as the facilitator of that particular group, just to keep them on task and mediate between staff and volunteers.
We will take this study and look at it, read it, and then come back with a motion, and we'll put it on the agenda for next month to do that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Frankie. I left you guys a twenty-two million dollar piece of paper.
Oh, yes, alright.
All right.
Ah. We could generally have a, um, budget workshop or two, um, in the month of May, uh, in hopes of getting our budget adopted in our regular meeting in June. So, um, now, if you guys are all good with this, I'm, I'm good. But nevertheless, we can send you guys a doodle poll regarding some meeting dates and times unless you guys have your calendars out now and want to decide on budget workshop time. Now, don't we have some tentative dates? Tentatively. On the iPads schedule? Did you put tentative dates on there?
It is.
Okay. We have a tentative date, I believe, of next Tuesday, a week from today.
I'm unable to meet that day. I'm having surgery again.
Okay. Yeah. So we can send.
More dates in this. Let's look at it and see what.
Yep.
Anything else, Frankie?
That's my twenty-two million dollar.
Uh, see, we need to congratulate one of our retired employees, won two hundred and fifty thousand dollars the other day. Yeah. Jerry Hughes.
Really?
He bought a lottery ticket for two hundred and fifty thousand.
Got contact information for Jerry, so don't forget.
I've got his phone.
I really liked Jerry. He was a great little boy.
We'll have to call him back. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank everybody.